Good afternoon and welcome to Newport Beach. We are going to convene the January 28, 2020 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Muldoon, I'm sure, is on his way right behind me.
There you go, perfect. All right. Item number one, clarification of items on the consent calendar. Counsel, do we have any requests for clarification? All right, seeing none, we'll move into item number two, the proclamation of Barbara Sloate for her years of volunteering at Oasis Senior Center. Ms. Sloate, why don't you come on forward? So what we'll do is we'll have you stand right next to the microphone on the other side. Yep, thank you very much.
I haven't done this before.
No, but you've done a lot of volunteering. So we'll have Councilmember Dixon give a few remarks and then I'm going to read the proclamation and then you'll have an opportunity to speak if you'd like to.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome, Ms. Sloate. Thank you. For eight years Barbara Sloate has devoted her volunteer hours at Oasis Senior Center to planning and implementing the annual special event fundraiser for the Friends of Oasis. And for six years Barbara has volunteered to co-manage the gift shop at Oasis, which is an ongoing fundraising effort for the Friends of Oasis. And Barbara has served as a devoted Friends of Oasis board member for the past eight years, serving on several committees in order to support the efforts of the Friends and the Oasis Senior Center. And whereas in 2019 Barbara was selected to serve on the Orange County Senior Services Advisory Council, for the first time we now have a resident of Newport Beach serving on that council, which oversees and advises on state-funded senior programs in the county. So now, on behalf of the mayor, Will O'Neill, mayor of the city of Newport Beach, and on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, we recognize Barbara Sloate for her tireless devotion and talent provided to the Oasis Senior Center and the city of Newport Beach. Thank you, Barbara. Let me just explain why Barbara's being recognized. So we did get a request during the time I was mayor for a representative of the city who can represent the city on the county's human, what is it? It's called the Member of the Senior Services Advisory Committee. And so I asked our Oasis staff and city staff, who is an outstanding volunteer in our Oasis community? And Barbara's name was unanimously identified. So thank you, Barbara, for all you're doing for our seniors in our community and for the county. And thank you, and welcome down. And do you want to come down too?
Yeah, actually, before we do that, though, Barbara, I just want to say thank you also for all of the volunteer efforts that you've been doing for the city. Is there anything you'd like to say before we take a picture?
Well, I was very surprised and I feel very honored for the opportunity to serve. And I really feel very fortunate to be able to give back to my community. It's kind of a family thing, my family, that we've been doing it for three generations. Service to our community is really important. And my son is going to be embarrassed, but he was honored last week, he's sitting here, by the Orange County Council of Boy Scouts of America for his service to scouting. So it's a family thing.
Well, congratulations. We're going to take a picture right over there.
Thank you.
All right, we'll do two pictures. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. All right.
One for the city's social.
All right, and then for my fellow councilmembers, just so you know, we're going to be continuing item number SS3 to our February 25 meeting. And so with that, we're going to move into item number four, which is Newport Heights pedestrian and bicycle facility discussion. Before we start up the presentation, I'm going to hand the mic over to Mayor Pro Tem, Brad Avery.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just so we're kind of understand how we're here for this item tonight. I know all of you that have come for this item, virtually all of you have attended the our previous efforts to bring the community together in the Heights and discuss Heights traffic and pedestrian safety and trying to do things, come up with some solutions to make our streets safer, which I know everybody wants to do, but everybody is not aligned and we have different opinions of how to get there. And those meetings are sometimes tense. And so I felt, I feel the community has gone through quite a bit on this already. And some people ask me, well, why are we meeting again? And last year, I think it was in late summer, a community member brought a group of folks here and the full council heard them speak and give some testimonies to their experiences with traffic in the Heights and their desire to see some things done to make the area more pedestrian, bike-friendly, if you will, and safer. And so the council, I think a number of the members were, all of us, of course, are concerned with that. And so the council gave some direction to staff to perhaps look at the Heights once again and go, and then conduct this study session. So that's how we got here, just so you know. And we're always open, of course, and we appreciate everybody coming in. And we're always open to ideas and we definitely want to hear from the community on this once again. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe adding just one other thing, because sometimes folks come to council meetings and wonder what a study session means versus a regular council meeting. Study session means we can't actually give direction, we can't take action, I should say, today. So if we were going to actually take action out of discussions we had today, that would have to come back to a future council meeting. That's the difference between a study session item, which is what this is, where we are trying to gather information, understand the issue versus having it at our regular council meetings for action. All right, we'll move on. Oh, I'm sorry, have we printed off enough copies yet? Okay, so if you didn't get a copy and you would like a copy of the presentation, it will be on the screen, of course, but we've got paper copies in the back. All right, Mr. Webb.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon, counsel. Tonight we want to talk a little bit about, as Mr. Avery introduced, some more discussion in the Newport Heights area regarding pedestrians and bicycle movements. So I'm also pleased to have with me tonight Brad Avery. He's our principal traffic engineer, civil engineer. I'm sorry, Brad Avery, that's Brad Avery. This is Brad Summers next to me. So anyway, I'm going to turn it over to Brad to go through the discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor O'Neill and Mayor Pro Tem, Brad Avery. I am Brad Summers, principal civil engineer within the Public Works Department. And as you both have mentioned, we will be talking about bicycle and pedestrian facilities and hopefully having a good discussion about that this afternoon. I think Mayor Pro Tem Avery went over kind of the background on this to highlight a few council items that have happened within the past few years. On August 14th, our city traffic engineer, Tony Bryan, who is with us here tonight, did present the findings of the Newport Heights neighborhood school traffic study. And throughout that, in that extensive public reach out for, out, excuse me, effort, 31 recommendations were created, of which, and we've noted that there were two, bike lanes on Clay Street as well as a loading zone on Beacon, were a bit controversial and the public spoke their part. And we heard, and with that, city council asked that the staff go back out to the community and have further, or have further conversation with them, which staff did do. And ultimately that led to the sharrows we put in on Clay Street. Now, it should be noted here that the consideration here was the concern of loss of parking on these streets. Now, the conversation, of course, continued. More in the background, we heard it in staff members here at the city. And then a public comment on October 8th of 2019, several members of the community, more interested in adding bicycle and pedestrian facilities within this neighborhood, spoke during the public comment period, which then led to council requesting an item to be placed on a future agenda, which here we are. So as the conversation continued, we really do hear two contrasting points of view and desires for this neighborhood. On one side, we're hearing from families, of course, of the school-aged children, there's a large school contingency within this neighborhood, but also other members within this neighborhood and community have a desire to add additional cycling and pedestrian facilities. On the other side, there's really a concern of losing street parking and the feel of urbanizing this neighborhood. Now, this is an older neighborhood, as we all know, it has some beautiful mature landscaping. And we've heard from a lot of community members, I think many of which are with us here tonight, that have been part of this community for a long time, really liked that neighborhood for what it is and how it is now. As far as the discussion tonight, we really look forward to having a forum and further council and community discussion. We do have some information or more information about different types of pedestrian and bicycle facilities that I feel is important to kind of have the conversation and understand what the potential benefits and impacts are. We've created some considerations to help that discussion along, and if we choose to have, move forward with some of these items, maybe we can talk about some next steps. So this slide details quite a few items in addition to some larger items that have been done in this community. And when looking back through the studies we've had over the years and considering the amount of work that public works staff does, again, in this neighborhood, we feel we actually pay quite a bit of attention to it. And that makes sense, considering that it's an older neighborhood, it has a unique characteristic to it, and of course, the influence of those three schools brings quite a bit of traffic in the morning and the afternoon. And earlier today, talking with our police department, they felt that they too, because of nature, again, of this community and the schools, put quite a few resources, maybe more than you would see in other comparable-sized neighborhoods, into this community in the Looking at the Newport Heights area, we've really pared it down from the full Newport Heights area to kind of the central area bound by Westminster on the west end, 15th Street on the north end, Irvine Avenue to the east, and Cliff Drive to the south, kind of is our focus area. Now, if we wish to discuss areas further out from this, that is, we are able to do that, but this is really where we're kind of focusing as we see most of the congestion and traffic. As we talk about pedestrian and bicycle facilities, it really comes down to the roadways, the users, what we have there, and then how we accommodate those different uses. Now Newport Heights is actually fairly uniform. Most of the interior streets look a lot like Clay Street here, with kind of the parking on both sides. You have enough roadway width for direction travel in both, or excuse me, for travel of motor vehicles in both directions. And of course, off the side, you can see the homes are set back a bit. We have this nice mature landscaping and some private improvements in the, along the shoulder there. But as we talk about these facilities and as we've heard more and more about what potentially could go into them, such as bike facilities, pedestrian facilities, it's important to look at this and understand how much room we have to work with, and that can lead us to the potential benefits or impacts. So in a way, in putting on kind of my Public Works goggles here, this is how we would look at the roadway, say, as we consider different facilities. When we take an interior street such as Clay, which is again a fairly typical street within the Heights, we have 36 feet of asphalt, or 36 feet of a roadbed to work with. And that accommodates, obviously, the parking lanes, two-way vehicle traffic. And then if we have pedestrians or bicycles, they either share the road with the vehicle traffic or that interior area, or they may use the shoulder if cars aren't parked there. Now, within this 36 feet, it's divided up into two 10-foot travel lanes, 10 feet for each direction of travel for a total of 20, two 8-foot parking lanes, so parking on both sides. And then a rather unique characteristic to Newport Heights, where we actually have 12 feet of unused public right-of-way on both sides behind the curb. Now, I'll flashback to the past slide, and again, you can see here, I guess unused may not be the right term, that the landscaping and everything that has gone into this, mostly by the private residents or private parties, really does add to the character of that neighborhood. And we've heard that that is a concern of the residents as well. Talking about existing bicycle facilities, when you look at kind of the greater Newport Heights area, we show here the pink solid line, which is a continuous bike lane, say along Cliff Drive and up around Newport Harbor High. We have a dashed pink line here, which resembles a time-restricted or time-limited parking/bike lane. And this is a unique facility that we put into these impacted areas where, say, heading towards Ensign Intermediate in the morning, parking would be restricted or prohibited from that southbound side, allowing the shoulder to be used by students as a bike lane. In the afternoon, parking is now allowed on that side of the street, but removed from the other side to allow students to leave along that bike lane. The light blue or cyan line here is actually the sharrows that we've added onto Clay Street. Now, again, we've heard quite a bit about bike facilities and pedestrian facilities, and I wanted to take the opportunity here to go through a few of them that I've heard about, really to talk about what these facilities are and really what the benefits and potential impacts to a neighborhood like the Heights could be if they were implemented. And we'll start with shared lane markings or sharrows. These are actually the green background sharrows shown in the picture here with some students leaving school in the afternoon. And the students are actually using this as intended. The sharrows, as we've implemented in a few places throughout the city, have shown an improvement in awareness, both for the cyclists using the roadway where they actually are intended to use the center of the road or share the lane, where there's a parked vehicle such as the truck on the right. We've also seen the increase in awareness for the motorists. We feel that this is a good tool to remind motorists that there may be bicycles on the roadway. Now, with sharrows and how this was more or less a compromise for Clay Street as we moved through the implementation of the school study, sharrows do not require removal of parking. And I think that was a benefit to many of the residents along Clay Street. And it should be noted as well is that the Bicycle Master Plan, which was created or completed in 2014, actually detailed sharrows as an improvement within the Newport Heights neighborhood for a total of eight streets, including Clay Street. The next conversation item would be on-street bike lanes. These are fairly common. We generally see these on streets that act more like collectors or collectors or arterials, kind of your bigger, more high-traffic streets. The picture here is actually showing Irvine Avenue where we have our time-limited parking versus bike lane. So this is leaving Ensign, where these students are riding down the bike lane. And again, they're fairly common. I think we, as users, understand how we operate in these, whether we're motorists, we operate next to them, and bicycles get their own path of travel, which is delineated generally by striping on the roadway. And more often than not, it's between the curb and the moving motor vehicles. Now, when considering implementation of something such as a bike lane within these interior streets in the Heights, the potential impact would be the removal of parking or restricted parking if we did what was the original recommendation from the study of doing that time-limited parking on one side and then the other. Now, protected bike lane, also known as a separated bike lane, and as we show here, is a one-way, there's a two-way version of this called the cycle track two. We've heard quite a bit about this as well, so we took a quick look at it. And the reality is, these bike lanes are generally more for urban areas where, again, there's more traffic. You may have a sidewalk infrastructure in place for the pedestrians. And it really is a unique feature, but I'm not sure it's something that we would recommend for the interior streets of this neighborhood. As we have the slides up, the benefits to this, where, and if they could be implemented perhaps in another areas, it does provide the cyclist with a path that is separated from the vehicles, whether it's parked vehicles or moving motor vehicles, through some sort of raised feature. In this picture, it shows kind of a raised concrete median. We've also seen delineators or some sort of other vertical element to allow the motorists to know that that is specifically for bikes. But one of the concerns with this, of course, is that they're not allowed for pedestrians, or generally pedestrians are not intended to use this facility. So therefore, again, they may, or they are generally installed next to sidewalks.
Just a moment. Do stay on that slide, please.
Sure.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you, Mayor. It says, "Not for pedestrians, should have sidewalk." Is that a law?
No, these are fairly new. I don't know that there's legal ramifications to that or law written, but in all the guidance that we follow, they, these are intended for cyclists only.
But, so it's staff's opinion it should have a sidewalk?
That's correct. We have seen some of these go in, say, I want to say San Clemente or maybe further south, where they have allowed pedestrian access to them, but what they've done is they've added in an additional width for pedestrians, say, an additional five feet, and then striped that out completely separate. So it's essentially like having a sidewalk within the same area.
Is there anything that requires us to have more than just simply a bike lane with a bumper?
I'm not following.
Is there anything in the law that requires us to have pedestrian access, other than simply a bike lane with a curb buffer?
No.
Thank you.
All right. Go ahead.
Moving on to sidewalks and pedestrian facilities, again, looking at our overall map, what we show here is in the green or the bright green, are actually existing and continuous sidewalks, including the 15th Street sidewalk that was recently added to the south shoulder of that roadway. Now, the pink areas are actually discontinuous sidewalks. These are areas where we may have had portions of sidewalk built through what we'll talk about next, a significant link policy, but they are discontinuous. So the blue lines represent our significant link streets. Now, our predecessors created what they call a significant link policy through Municipal Code Section 1305.010 and the accompanying Resolution 88-88, which determined that certain streets throughout the city would be considered significant links. And what this means is as these streets are redeveloped or the properties adjacent to them, the street would ultimately be put into its ultimate configuration. And in this neighborhood, Westminster, 15th Street, Irvine Avenue, and Cliff Drive were designated significant, excuse me, significant streets, then leading to having sidewalks placed on them, but again, tied to redevelopment from the private property owner. Now, we had a great question regarding this from the public earlier this week, and what would trigger that? And following the Municipal Code Section, the trigger for a homeowner or a private property owner along these links would either be redeveloping or redoing their house and adding up to 20, or 25% or more floor area space, or it'd be considered new construction as determined by the Community Development Department. And again, if you were, say, a homeowner on Irvine Avenue, you completely leveled your home and were building a new home, at that point, you'd be required to put a sidewalk segment in front of your home. The benefit to this is it does add sidewalks, and these streets will have sidewalks, but as we know, not everybody's redeveloping their homes at this point and/or may not even have plans for that. So this could be kind of a long gradual process and can lead to disjointed sidewalks.
Just a moment. Ms. Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Summers, so just clarify that on the code requirement, was that created in 1988?
I know the resolution being 1988, I believe that's when the resolution came in determining which streets. I'm not sure exactly when the code came in.
Well, then, then my next question is, are we enforcing this? In private development, that we'll require on a significant street that sidewalks are built?
We do enforce this through our development area when homes come in for redevelopment, significant development. Examples of that would be 15th Street. We recently did a sidewalk project, as you know, but there were a lot of links in there that were already connected that we could build to. We did this on Irvine Avenue, too. There's several that the links are there. And then we did an augmentation program to basically connect those on the east side of the street.
So we've been enforcing this for
We have been.
Many years. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Looking at sidewalks, I think, again, this is a fairly common facility. We've all used them, and I think we understand how they operate, but the benefit here is they do provide that path of travel away from moving motor vehicles. Within the city, per Municipal Code Section, we can actually designate them as bicycle sidewalks and have a dual use for them, both for pedestrians and cyclists. When considering the neighborhood such as Newport Heights, they can be put in without a parking impact by reallocating some of the public right-of-way behind the curb. But of course, one of the downsides of this is we understand that reallocating that public right-of-way may remove some of those private improvements in landscaping, which of course leads into a lot of the residents' concerns of urbanizing the neighborhood. Now, sidewalks can be put in a few ways. On one end of the spectrum could be a large city project where they'd be put in in a quicker fashion. And then the, on the other end of the spectrum would be the significant link policy where it would determine these streets require, or the sidewalks would be put in eventually. But again, that's through private redevelopment.
Sorry, just a moment. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. What is the legal requirement for width of a sidewalk installed by the city or a private individual?
Well, the basic legal requirement is usually 88-driven, so there's like 42 inches or something. We can also dictate that through our standard plans that you approve. Some of ours are five feet, some are six feet, but there are areas in town like the Peninsula, we make exceptions, or Babwa Island, there's just not enough width for it.
How wide is the one that was just pictured in your estimation?
Six. Yeah. I believe that's it. I think that's an eight foot, Brad would say.
Okay, thank you.
So we also wanted to take an opportunity to look at Cliff Drive. Now, Cliff Drive is unique. It acts differently than our interior streets, simply because it connects the neighborhood down to Coast Highway and our coastal areas, and is often used by motorists, pedestrians, and bicycles to access the neighborhood as well. So looking at the area, which actually starts as Riverside Avenue from Coast Highway, then turns into Cliff Drive, where Riverside turns north and heading to Irvine Avenue, we have a bit more room to work with. And one of the reasons why this is unique is actually instead of 36 feet, we actually have an additional 20 feet of roadway in this area. Now, again, it accommodates, or it acts more like a local collector than an interior local street. And with that, we see more uses on this. So in this case, we actually have two 14-foot vehicle lanes. 14 feet is on the larger end of the spectrum. Generally, we're between 10 and 12 feet. We see that we have two bike lanes, one in each direction, six feet, accounting for each side, and then, of course, our parking lanes. Along the south side or the harbor side, we have a nice sidewalk facility that's a bit discontinuous. It starts about the Theater Arts Building and ends just short of Irvine Avenue. But then on the north side, the sidewalk is discontinuous and has kind of some mismatched segments. Like the other interior streets, we actually have the 12 feet of public right-of-way behind the curb. Focusing in on Cliff Drive a bit more, we wanted to look at the north side sidewalk. It actually starts on Riverside Avenue off the highway on the west side and then curves up and around. We have a nice 10-foot sidewalk here, which is utilized and very comfortable by both bicyclists and pedestrians. Once we cross past Riverside to Tustin, there is a missing link, and this is, this is something that we do see along these significant link streets. And in this case, people come off that sidewalk, and sometimes, as pictured here, some people choose to go against traffic through the segment. Continuing on from Tustin down to Irvine Avenue, again, here we have several different styles of sidewalk, different widths, such as in the top corner here, this is about three feet. Down in the bottom-left corner, we have a five-foot section of sidewalk that was recently put in as part of the significant link policy through the construction of a new home. And then there are several segments that are actually missing.
Just a moment. Mr. Avery.
Brad, I'm sure you looked at this about perhaps shrinking the lanes. I am certainly no traffic in here, so 11 feet or even the minimum 10 feet, and then yielding the sidewalks without encroaching into all the hardscape and softscape residents that put in over the years.
Yes, that's a consideration. Actually, we can, we have a detail on that a little bit later in the presentation. So as the Public Works Department helped facilitate the discussion, we put together some considerations. One note here is, is we do not have bicycle lanes or bike facilities specifically called out in these considerations. And with that, it really came back to the discussion of, we know parking is very important for this neighborhood, and that's something that we've heard over and over again from the community. And also, like the protected bike paths, bicycle lanes generally aren't for pedestrian activity. Now, pedestrians can walk in them if there's no sidewalk adjacent to them for a standard bike lane. But in the case of, say, sidewalks, again, we can make it a dual-use facility, so we've been, and it wouldn't have that parking impact. So the considerations for discussion are not limited, or we're not excluding the talk about bicycle lanes, but the considerations lean more towards the pedestrian facilities. So the first consideration, additional significant link streets, to help fill in the sidewalk and network within the neighborhood there, again, within that central area, the consideration here is to designate Clay, Tustin, and Beacon as significant links. Again, this is done to help facilitate that network within the neighborhood, and it's actually, I'd like to reiterate, we've heard, obviously, the school heard, obviously, the school traffic utilizes these roadways, but we've heard from the community and neighbors that would like to use sidewalks within this area as well.
So just a moment. Ms. Brenner.
I have a question about significant link streets. So that designation then means that any improvement on properties, they have to put in a sidewalk. What else does it mean being a significant link street?
Right now, we're kind of looking at sidewalks. The word significant links is a city Newport Council designation. That's not something in the federal highway code. It's, I think it was an attempt by the council at the time to identify links that we need between schools and critical areas, and how to start getting pedestrian facilities into those. So, but, but the code allows you to do frontage improvement. Let's say it's a vacant property. We could have them put in curb and gutter. We could put in street trees, sidewalks. All those are within the realm of public improvements that are tied to development.
The primary one we're looking at, though, is sidewalks.
Tonight, we're talking mainly sidewalks, pedestrian improvements.
So, so that is a significant designation to property owners if they are on a significant link street, then?
It would be, the council ordinance would require that those property owners on those streets that are deemed that way do put in the improvements when there's a redevelopment occur.
Okay. What I'm really, what I'm really trying to figure out is, seems like all the streets in Newport now are significantly streets, like every street is heavily impacted. So I'm wondering what good it does us to have certain streets that just have that designation rather than looking at comprehensively all of our city streets.
And what I'd say on that, if, Brad, go back to that nap you're proposing, what we tried to do here is lay out a pedestrian grid. You can see there's a lot of streets in there, but connecting those schools and looking for the primary ways to cut through this neighborhood, this gives kids and other folks an idea they can get through a neighborhood on a sidewalk versus walking in the street. But I don't think it necessarily means you have to do every street with a sidewalk. In fact, this would not require Santa Ana or some of the other streets to put sidewalks in. That is not a requirement of council right now. You could, but those, when those develop, properties develop, we do not require a sidewalk at this time.
So it's channeling more traffic onto certain streets and less traffic onto others, basically?
You could say that, but these are certain, like Beacon is one of the streets that children use. We see a lot of traffic on that. Tustin is a cut-through up to 15th Street, and as we mentioned, Cliff there is already a significant link, but there's a lot of connection with that. The interesting thing about Cliff is that if it was fully developed, we think, you would probably find that more kids would use that because it is a direct connection to Ensign Elementary School versus going up through Beacon, and we can talk about that in a few slides.
I think that's also going to be dependent upon what the school district does, and are you going to be telling us what their plans are?
And just for the audience and the council, we did invite the, the school district to this. I don't believe they are participating tonight, but they do know of the study session. They do have the information. Okay, I think maybe the school districts are here. I can't speak entirely to their Ensign project. I do know they're doing planned construction there. As we understand, too, they're going to be channeling the entrance to Ensign to the corner of Cliff and Irvine, and which makes it more of a deed for Cliff to be the connection to Ensign if they're coming up from Riverside.
We really kind of need to know what they're doing in order to make our plans.
Alright, Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, on the existing significant streets, are there sidewalks on, throughout the extent of all these significant streets? Are there sidewalks?
They, it's a discontinuous thing. So the homes that have been remodeled or redeveloped at that level actually have put in their sidewalks. So as you drive through there, you'll see some long segments, and you'll see some that are discontinuous where the new homes are.
Or have no sidewalks.
Or there would be none if it hadn't.
I might suggest, maybe when we discuss this again, that can you create a graphic map that shows the existence of sidewalks or not on significant streets? I think that would be helpful. So on these existing blue or potentially green significant streets, if we decide to go that way, it would be, the conversion would be dependent upon private development, correct? So it would change over a period of years. So it's not anything that's going to happen quickly, but it would happen potentially. Is that correct?
That's correct. I think the policy, when they put significant link in, was to introduce sidewalks in a gradual manner. They're slowly put into a neighborhood. And again, I go back to 15th Street. If you remember that street about a year and a half ago before we completed all the links, they were slowly put in as some development came along, and that would be the same thing here. At some point, future councils could choose, we have enough pieces in, now let's just complete the project.
And then to complete the project, or if we were to put in, well, let me just clarify what I think you, I heard you say. So maybe wider sidewalks are preferable to put both pedestrians and cyclists on an eight or 10-foot wide sidewalk? Is that, am I understanding that correctly? Is that preferable to a bike path, a bike lane?
You could do that, in fact, on Cliff, which we mentioned Riverside, that's a 10-foot sidewalk. That is a pedestrian and cycle bike way. 10 feet works for good for two-way traffic, as Mr. Muldoon alluded. Maybe wider, you can actually have pedestrians and cyclists on that. So that would be one way to do it, or even if you wanted a wider sidewalk, like six-foot, is more comfortable for people walking side by side.
But I'm just trying to understand, is there a preference to widen the sidewalks to allow for both pedestrians and bicycle cyclists?
I think if, and Brad, correct me if I'm wrong, but you would prefer a sidewalk over strictly a bike lane because it allows for both traffic. We put the people on the walkway and the bikes on the walkway versus trying to just have a bike lane, when that means people are still walking in the street.
So it might be helpful to see a visual update of these charts, that on the existing sidewalks on the significant streets, what is the width of those sidewalks? Are they consistently uniform, or are they, do they vary?
From what our experience is, it's generally five feet, because that's our standard right now. And I think Brad had a slide just earlier. He saw one of the new homes that went in, and it's a five-foot sidewalk in front on Cliff.
So five foot, though, is not wide enough for both bikes and pedestrians?
Currently, that would not be, you could, if you had two-way, but that would probably be a little narrow.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, go ahead.
So the second consideration is actually to look at Beacon and consider installing the sidewalk or constructing the sidewalk between Irvine Avenue and Fullerton. Now, the area here shown in Cyan is per the prior consideration of adding Beacon to the significant link policy. And then the pink section here is where we're considering actually constructing that section of sidewalk. This picture here is taken, and it does resemble what we see in the morning, where we see that Beacon is used as a pickup and drop-off area. There's a good crossing directly into the school. And as was noted, the school district does have, or there's a current discussion about potentially changing the access points to this. So this is something for consideration again, but we will be watching and seeing, or waiting for the school district decision.
Excuse me, can I say something?
Ms. Dixon?
Well, I would just make a note, so I don't forget this. When we continue this discussion during the discussion, do we, you just said, do we wait for the school district to get back to us? But I would like to be more proactive in our conversations with the school district. Once we decide here what our recommendation will be going forward for staff, and they're just recommendations, but these are not final decisions and actions, but I think we should be more proactive with the school district. I just don't want to lose that thought.
Thank you. Keep going.
So the idea here is to move forward with this as a capital improvement project, should be something that the community desires. Now, three of the four homes on this, this section actually are new homes with newer landscaping and are properly set back. The fourth home is an older home, but is properly set back, but would have some more private improvements that we would work through. Now, what we see out there doesn't appear to be anything that we have not generally worked with on other capital improvement projects. The third consideration, I think this comes back to Mayor Protam Avery's question, would be to complete the Cliff Drive sidewalk by completing that 10-foot sidewalk or taking all the way from its current terminus at Riverside all the way to Irvine Avenue. And again, this is to provide that continuous path for residents as well as the school children, moving up into the neighborhood and down into the coastal areas. Now, when looking at Cliff Drive, again, we talked about we have a bit more room here, and this exhibit, although a bit busy, again, goes to Mayor Protam's point, where in looking at it, staff feels that we could potentially narrow the roadway itself to help limit the impact of the wider sidewalk in that public right-of-way section. So in looking at this and knowing, say, that the lanes are 14 feet, we could probably narrow those a bit, which has been known to have a bit of a traffic calming effect, so that's a positive for this roadway. But then that would allow us potentially to, instead of taking a full 10 feet out of that, that 12-foot public right-of-way, reallocating that, maybe we can split that difference. Now, this time, I think a target would be, say, five and five, or five feet out of the public right-of-way and five feet out of the roadway narrowing, but that would have to be determined later through some preliminary engineering, as would the consideration of, of other private improvements. We know there are some retaining walls in some other facilities that we'd have to take a good look at.
Alright, just a moment. Mr. Avery.
Yeah, I think, Brad, you touched on the, the sort of the double win of this. I've heard from a lot of residents, of course, my own experience driving around the Heights, people tend to really fly along this stretch right here. And I think a benefit would be the, the traffic calming, as I guess studies have shown that you narrow the lane and traffic moves slower. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Generally, that narrower lane creates a more constrained feeling for the motorists and allows
They're less inclined to step on it.
That's, yes.
Thank you.
And that concludes our presentation.
Alright, council, do we have any questions or discussion at this time? We'll have more after, okay. Alright, we'll go out to public comment. If you'd like to speak on this item, go ahead and line up through the middle there. We have two podiums. Both mics are working. When someone else is speaking, you're more than welcome to join at the other mic and just wait your turn. Come on up, please.
My name is Flo Martin. I'm a 53-year resident of Costa Mesa. I have been a member of the city's Bike Way and Walkability Committee for the last five years, and am now a board member for the Costa Mesa Alliance for Better Streets. I also bike. My husband and I have a tandem. We've done long-distance tandeming all over the country and overseas, and I also walk. I'm close to 78 years old, and I walk with a cane. Unfortunately, I can't walk all the way through not only the streets on my, in my city, but also the streets in Newport Beach, which I do on a regular basis. I love to walk to Back Bay from my house. I strongly urge you to look forward to the future, to look for developing active transportation options. The streets are not just for motorists. They're for pedestrians and cyclists as well. They are public roadways for all of us who pay taxes. I looked at the first slide of the shareow, and my first memory was Brock McCann. Shareows are not safe. Bike lanes are, sidewalks even more so. I strongly suggest that you look to the future for active transportation. Costa Mesa is doing just that. We have developed an active transportation plan. It's been in effect for two years, and we're now starting to develop a pedestrian master plan. Pedestrians have a right to be in this world. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Jim Carlson. I'm a 40-year resident of Newport Beach, live on Cliff Drive, 2300, right in the middle of the section that you're anticipating widening. I send all the council members a detailed analysis of what the feasibility is to do some of this. In my opinion, a 10-foot sidewalk, like down on Riverside by the park there, is not feasible. It'll require, the houses are set back and raised up. It'll require the complete change of the stairs, major retaining walls, and other things. It will make their front yards almost unusable, and a lot of those are view homes and things like that. I know that's not a public consideration, but the front yard access is really a major deal. Right now, on the 2200 block, which is adjacent to Irvine and Fullerton, the city is doing, well, I guess it's a five-foot sidewalk, but inside the curb to the face of the retaining wall is four and a half feet. So it's, whatever, six foot, or it's four and a half. So those, those work, but to go any further, on the 2300 block, my house was built in 1947, and is not, I have a little driveway, a little walkway, but around the corner, there's nothing. And then the other side, that goes all the way down, there's no sidewalk. The house next to that, I measured that. My, my steps, a four and a half-foot sidewalk from the inside of the curb to my step would work, without a major change. The house next door, and all the ones down below that, would require major changes. There's three feet there now, and so all that has to be redone. I, I think the pedestrians and things on Cliff Drive are okay, and the bikes lanes. I do agree with Mr. Avery that the traffic is just out of control there. I'm not sure that the white, I like the narrowing of the lanes, but it might be dangerous there because they go so fast. So that's, that's my take on the, I would, I would suggest that you do a very detailed engineering analysis and a cost estimate because it's going to be expensive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Excuse my voice. It's nearly gone. My name's Kurt Herperts. I'm a resident of Newport Heights. I live on the corner of Clay in San Bernardino, have lived on Clay Street for 40 years now. I'm a Newport Heights resident for 64 years now. I'm primarily concerned about the discussion on Clay Street. It seems like we're going backwards. In our previous discussions on the prior improvements that were proposed, we did get very late notice in terms of what was going to occur, and it was kind of felt like it was being force-fed on us. The city council was very gracious and allowed us more time. We were able to get the word out to people, and ultimately, we had 120 people that signed a petition saying they did not want what was being proposed for Clay Street. And I feel like that's what's happening again. I just found out about this last week. I understand this is a study session, but what happened previously was a study session. And ultimately, we thank our councilman, Mr. Avery, for setting up a public hearing that occurred in our neighborhood in the Heights, and we brought everyone together. And we had a very good consensus on what was desirable and what wasn't, and there was an ultimate resolution with the shareows, all the signing. Everything was approved with the exception of one item, and that was the elimination of the parking on Clay Street. And the alternative to that was the shareows letting, putting up signs that indicated that bikes had the right-of-way, and it appears to have been very effective. But one of the questions that was asked at the end of that was, is this it? Are we going to have to revisit this? And the assurance that I was given is, we think we have everything handled. We're going to implement and go from there. So now, last week, I find out there's a new program, and all of a sudden, Clay Street's now being considered a significant link. And it's like, what does that mean? I understand that may just right now mean a sidewalk in the future, but oftentimes, when you go to the city to do other types of items, you're told, well, it's now a significant link, and it also includes A, B, C, and D. And I appreciate what council member Brenner indicated about what are the implications of that. But I think that we need a lot more indication in terms of what the limitations are, or how broad can this be, and before we go down that road. And the last statement would be in regards to significant link. Who has designated this Clay Street and the others a significant link? Is this being proposed, or has it already happened? If it's already happened, why hadn't we been told about it and given the opportunity to speak to it? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Kate Malouf, and I live at 526 San Bernardino Avenue here in Newport Beach. My husband and I and our three children have lived in Newport Heights for the past 13 years. I currently have two children at Newport Harbor High School and one at Ensign Interim Immediate. All three of my children have attended Newport Heights Elementary School, and for the past seven years, when my children became of safe age, they have either walked or rode their bikes to school, to junior guards, or throughout the Newport Heights neighborhood to get to and from practices, meetings, and events, all without incident, and all while following the rules of the road. We are unfortunately privy to the horrific tragedy that occurred in our neighborhood a few years ago with the death of a fellow student from Newport Heights Elementary. the death of a fellow student from Newport Heights Elementary. I would like to thank the city council, as well as the city of Newport Beach at that time, for its immediate response to install a sidewalk on the southwest side of 15th Street following that tragedy. I would also like to thank those at the city who were instrumental in getting the shareows and signage completed on Clay Street prior to the start of this 2019-2020 school year. Also, the added crossing guards for all three schools in Newport Heights neighborhood, Newport Harbor, Ensign, and Newport Heights Elementary, have been welcoming and helpful to all those who commute through and around these schools during the school year. So why are we here today? What is the need for this additional traffic study session? The actions I mentioned above and accomplished, have been accomplished by the city and in partnership with the school district are working. The Newport Beach Police Department and school administration, specifically at Ensign Intermediate, have bike safety assemblies at the beginning of the school year, and regular, ongoing discussions with students about bike safety and rules of the road. I recently spoke to the chiefs of police at Newport Beach and Costa Mesa, and they reported that they have limited bike accidents, and those that have been reported have been either people who are driving while on the cellphone, or bicycle riders not obeying the road rules, or riders with cellphones that they're using. And most of these bike accidents seem to happen right at the beginning of the school year. As a 13-year resident and a parent of three children, I cannot speak for all the parents in this neighborhood or all the residents of this neighborhood, but I am an active community member, as many of you know, and I am a listener, and I will tell you that many, if I may finish, that many who could not be here today are frustrated that the traffic issue keeps coming back up. I, like many, believe there are several issues within this city and community, and we should be focusing on those issues instead of bringing this back to the table. I mentioned I am a listener, and a very small group of people whose position and desire is to put sidewalks in our neighborhood, I understand. But before we go spending money that is not in our current city budget, I would like us to explore reasonable options such as directional time restrictions on Clay and Beacon between Irvine and Fullerton. The direction time restriction is a proven option on Irvine by Newport Harbor High School, and we should try these options before anything else.
All right, Ms. Malouf.
Thank you very much for your time, and please let us move on.
Thank you. All right. No, hang on. No, 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 no. Just to be clear, the way we do it here, same as the coastal commission. If you'd like to show your appreciation for our previous speaker, just put your hands up and just kind of move that a little bit. We'll understand, trust me. Appreciate that. All right. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jim Kusuba. I live on Fullerton, fairly close to Beacon. So my concern is, I'm looking at Ensign, and its actual entrance is on Cliff. It's not on Beacon, it's actually on Cliff. And I did also talk to somebody from the school district lately, and they tend to indicate that for the safety of the children, they actually need to have a single point of entry in that school. This is for, like, safety from things that occur to in our schools these days, not from traffic. And they also were hoping it would be near the front offices so they could monitor that all the time. So, taking that in, it doesn't make a lot of sense that you would put a sidewalk on Beacon Street, because odds are, if the school board actually does what's right for the safety of the kids, that entrance will be on Cliff. It's possible that the politics of the situation causes that not to happen, but you would think that they would vote for the kids' safety over anything else. So, looking at the plan, you know, I don't, the biggest problem I see down there, living there, is the sidewalk situation on Cliff is terrible. It's a really busy street. There's very difficult situations over there from narrow sidewalks and sometimes missing sidewalks. And a lot of kids are coming up from that peninsula to enter that Ensign School, so Cliff isn't obviously a good choice if it only had the sidewalk situation fixed on Cliff. I think that would be something that would actually work, regardless of where they put the entrance of the school, and also, that's the busy street that needs the protection, I would think, for people that walk. So that's very important, I think, is that we try to put the sidewalks on the streets that have the front entrance to the school, not a side entrance. That's not really where it may end up being in the future for safety reasons. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Matt Montgomery. I'm at 328 Fullerton, which is the corner of Fullerton and Beacon. I think one of the staff members mentioned that we're one of the four houses that were, was recently redeveloped. I thought Mrs. Malouf basically summarized everything. I think things are working. I have three children. I happen to have one at Heights, one at Ensign, and one at Harbor. I've lived there for 15 years. I knew what I was getting into when I bought that lot. It's a corner lot right adjacent to Ensign. I knew what I was buying. It's a unique neighborhood that we all love. Some of these plans just will destroy the uniqueness that we have there. And I'll tell you what, one of the safest spots to get dropped off is right in front of my house, because you can't move for 15 minutes in the morning and 15 minutes in the afternoon.
Yes.
You can't move. I can walk out there anytime I want. There's bicyclists, 80% of the kids are taking their bike to Ensign, okay? They're not going to get up on a sidewalk, get back down off the sidewalk. I mean, I won't be able to walk out of my house if you have a sidewalk, at least they're in the street. Like I said, cars move at a snail's pace, people use alleys, et cetera, but this is just, I don't know why we're talking about it, as Mrs. Malouf said. I'm really encouraged that the school district's here tonight. I think, I would love to see their plan. I think, I think there's a plan there. I mean, that school is, I mean, the acreage that it has, there's potential there. They don't use that acreage. And there's ball fields, which I've coached on many years, but there's a solution in and around the school. But to modify the uniqueness, the lack of sidewalks, the lack of streetlights, it'll devalue our property. So I just ask you to really consider what we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good, I guess it's actually almost evening. I'll start with, good afternoon, members of council. I'd like to thank you and the city staff for the time and effort you've invested in exploring ways to make the Heights safer for all pedestrians and bicyclists. My name's Peter Boyd, and I live at 505 Santa Ana Avenue. I attended Ensign and Harbor, rode my bikes there from M Street on the peninsula. I have a son at Heights right now, a daughter at Harbor. Obviously, this is a contentious issue. You know, this area was first platted 100 years ago, and when it was first platted, they didn't think about this when they developed it. And I think along the way, your predecessors have made changes and tried to address the concerns. Something I've read in the city report that kind of struck me is there's this word "urbanization" is mentioned, like, we don't want to urbanize this area. Well, according to National Geographic Society, the definition of urban is a region surrounding a city, and it goes on to state that most inhabitants of urban areas have non-agricultural jobs. Urban areas are very developed, meaning there is a density of human structures such as houses, buildings, and roads. My house was built in 1946. It was an urban area then. There aren't sidewalks, but I don't think that is something that has to change overnight, but I think adopting that plan to start thinking about designating some of these streets as significant link streets and requiring sidewalks has a lot of merit. When I did a remodel, I had to go underground to the pole because I wanted to? No, because your predecessors decided any improvements, in case there's future undergrounding, need to go, you know, you need to have your panel go underground to the pole. I think we need to plan for the future. A lot of the planning decisions, as you know, are getting taken out of your hands with the state making density choices for us, and I think there's only going to be more traffic, and there's going to be more competition for safety on the streets. So, I would like sidewalks around the schools. I'd love a sidewalk in front of my house. I actually have one. I put it in, and you'll see people walking down Santa Ana in the street, and then they jog in, they walk 50 feet on my little sidewalk, and then they go back into the street, which is kind of a crazy concept, but I think that's a really common sense future plan, maybe in some areas. Do it now if that's the greatest need. But requiring it for future development, I think is appropriate. And the other aspect is, I put a sidewalk in because I don't want people crushing my landscaping, you know? I'm on Santa Ana at Halloween. If you have any landscaping you care about, it's going to get destroyed. And so, one other thing is, this is a contentious issue. I appreciate the leadership you've all shown. I appreciate you giving us additional opportunities to talk about it. Obviously, this room is not together on this issue. I will say, though, I appreciate the notice. I know in the past, there was a claim that people didn't know about this. I got my postcard, that's why I'm here, and so I'd like you to consider doing what we can to make this a safe neighborhood for everybody. Bicyclists, pedestrians, adults, children, dogs, all of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yep, so I'll tell you what, if you hand them to our city attorney right there, he'll
make sure we get them.
Good evening. My name's Waverly LaCilla, and I've been living in Newport Heights for 35 years. I bought my house when I was 25 years old, and I live on the corner of Irvine and Clay, which is a very popular little street. I adamantly oppose sidewalks and bike lanes being put along Clay. This absolutely takes away from the uniqueness of the Heights. I also adamantly oppose Clay Street from being labeled as a significant street. This is burdening us with the owners with even more traffic, and then in my case, burdens me with too significant, having to take out all my trees if my house is then labeled, and I'm having to put in sidewalks. I've not redone my house in the 35 years I've lived there. I've remodeled and put in things like that, but never to take it down or do any significant remodeling. Everyone knows this corner and this house, with the house with big trees on it. And the Heights is known for its charm and its unplanned neighborhood, with its custom homes and beautiful landscaping, which is on my property includes the three gorgeous ficus trees that are hard to miss. These ficus knitted trees are approximately 80 years old and are healthy, and add to the neighborhood, providing gorgeous green belt along with having uplighting, which are light up at every night, during the evenings, and every corner during, across the street, excuse me. My neighbors also followed suit and have placed uplighting in their trees. You'll see several pictures of the trees throughout those. I wonder if there's been a recent count of pedestrian or school kids on Beacon, Clay, or on 15th to determine their routes. Most kids exit their schools and take the shortest path home. Kids leaving from middle school naturally take Beacon, Cliff, or head north or south on Irvine to take 15th. The high school kids then get driven or picked up, and if walking, exit the school grounds and are, again, taking 15th or walking along Irvine. Very few, if any, walk south or north on Irvine then to go down Clay. It just isn't the shortest route. It doesn't, isn't a direct route to get to from the schools. I also went to Harbor. I know there's shortcuts. It's not going down Clay. Kids don't exit their schools, then walk up and down Irvine to go to Clay. A suggestion I think that I would have an alternate is to limit parking along Clay, like the hours that we have on Irvine when it's school. Therefore, the areas that are often used for parked cars then can be used for bike lanes during the hours where kids are going to school. And then it alleviates the trees and landscaping from being removed, which would be a significant impact on my property because I love those trees. I would do just about anything to save those trees. I'd let you take the house instead of the trees. I'm not kidding, I was absolutely saddened when they took the eucalyptus trees off Irvine, when they dropped those, and we won't go into that, but I'd like the-
Just, you can finish up.
One last thing?
Yep.
I'd like the committee to be more proactive with the schools in respect to limiting class sizes, hence the schools, amount of children we're putting through the schools. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Carol Andrew. I live on King's Road. I've lived there in Newport Beach for 42 years. So here's the deal. Car dealers are using King's Road and Cliff Drive for demo rides. I can't speak to the other streets, but I can speak to these streets. The president of the homeowners association is preparing to go to these car dealers and speak with them. And if they don't follow through, then because he used to be a car dealer, he knows that if they contact the manufacturer, the manufacturer will deal with them, number one. Number two, y'all have narrowed parts of Cliff Drive, and it does absolutely no good at all, just so you know. Number three, I haven't seen any crossing guards at Ensign. Maybe I just don't see at 8 o'clock in the morning, but I don't see any crossing guards at Ensign. They could use another crossing, crosswalk, and they could use three people out there helping with that street. So the school needs to step up. Number four, people are disrespectful, and they don't care, or they don't know that the speed limit in front of a school is 25 miles an hour. The rest of Cliff Drive is 30 miles an hour. They also seem to have forgotten that they need to stop at stop signs. They aren't. We had stopped at a stop sign on Cliff Drive, and some idiot drove around us and continued through. Now, that was irritating, and my husband gestured wildly at these people, just so you know.
Your committee, you heard him go.
Yes. I was told by the parking police not to go like this anymore. Our neighbors shouldn't yell, "Slow down," because they're afraid they might shoot us. That's just what we were told. I don't know. I don't know whether it would be true or not, but I'm 76. If they shoot me, it's not going to be any big loss. And I don't mean to be flip, but this is a real serious problem in our neighborhood, and we really need to address it. So the Cliff Haven Homeowners Association is going to the manufacturers, we're going to the car dealers, we're going to talk to them. We put in next-door neighbor little notes about, "Did you know the speed limit was 25 miles an hour on King's Road?" Our neighborhood is changing. The older people are selling their homes. We have young kids on King's Road riding their bicycles. Give me a couple more minutes.
No, 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 no. You get a few more sentences.
Riding their bicycles and learning how to ride their bicycles, roller skating. All of these things are important to small children, and they can't do it because people go around those curves at 55 miles an hour.
Okay.
It's embarrassing. It is really embarrassing. So, we need to school our drivers on what they need to do, and we need to step up. Honest to God, we need to step up because it's awful.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Steve Moore. I'm owner of the property of 501 Tustin. It's actually in one of the pictures, specifically note, I noticed as the pictures were going by in the initial presentation. So unlike many of the people who've spoken, I'm a new homeowner in the Heights, and I intend to live there. Pulled permit, or we're about to pull permits to rebuild the property, which is at the corner of Clay and Tustin. When we were looking for a place to relocate to, my family and I, which includes four children, looked at many locations within Newport Beach. We went and spent a lot of time in Corona del Mar, Peninsula. We've been around the beach area for quite some time, and in discovering really the Heights, we decided that's where we wanted to locate to because of the culture of the neighborhood, because of the feel of it. It felt like it was very homey. It was just a great feel in terms of that neighborhood. And my concern is that the changes that are being proposed would change that unique culture and feel of that neighborhood and really put that at risk. And really, that's what I think a lot of the other neighbors, and of course, we love about that area. In addition to that, the design- In addition, addition to that, um, the designation of the significant links, I have significant concerns about that, and that, that would potentially, um, provide a risk of significant additional traffic going through that area over a period of time. Uh, that would not benefit the neighborhood, but would benefit only higher, uh, density developers wanting to put, uh, additional developments on PCH, which could enhance the risk to our community and our kids by having those significant links being designated in that way. Again, that's not something on the table right now, but is a concern for the future. And then of course, the, um, concern about it being an unfunded mandate really ends up being what I believe is a tax on the citizens that live in that neighborhood. And that's really problematic for me. Um, you know, my family, uh, is stretching to be able to rebuild there. We're trying to build something very nice that is great for the community, um, and will fit in well, and to add potentially several hundred thousand dollars of additional cost could be, um, dramatically detrimental to my ability to build there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening. Uh, excuse me. My name's Scott Berman. I live at six oh six King's Place in the Heights. Um, I have one child in Enson and a child at, uh, the Heights Elementary. First off, thank you so much for the work you've done so far in that presentation. Um, you know, I strongly support, uh, making changes and doing a lot of what's in that presentation. Being someone that, you know, is driving down either Fifteenth Street or Clay on a daily basis, picking both of my kids up from school, um, I can tell you those sheroes don't really work that well. Um, you know, both from the biker's perspective and from the car's perspective, uh, I, I haven't seen any change since they've been put in. In addition, I think, um, you know, with the advent of electric cars, the bikers feel more comfortable. There's some sense of safety from those sheroes that I don't think exists, especially as there are cars that are creeping up behind them that they don't seem to notice anymore. Um, so I do think bike lanes or, and/or sidewalks are a much better solution, and I'm strongly in favor of, of, you know, placing those, in those significant areas that, that you spoke about. Um, I think there's also one street that wasn't mentioned that, that I do see, living on King's Place. I see a ton of traffic in the morning and, and children walking and biking between where Cliff Drive hits King's Place, down King's Place, and then on Fifteenth Street towards the high school. So I do think that's one area that should be considered when, um, when making any decisions. All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. My name is Kevin Healy. I live at four six four Santa Ana Avenue, right at the corner of Clay and, uh, Santa Ana, otherwise known as Halloween Central. We've lived there for twenty-five years, had two wonderful daughters who attended, uh, Newport Heights, uh, Enson, and, uh, the high school. Uh, we're very, very familiar with, uh, the intersection and Newport Heights as well. I'd like to echo, uh, Ms. Maloof's comments, um, support that a hundred percent, and that I think our neighborhood, uh, as beautiful as it is, is only becoming, um, urbanized. I think that's the, the word of the day, and, uh, I'd like to come up with, um, maybe a couple of ideas, rather than throw problems at you. How about a couple of solutions? One, I think we ought to better educate the students in Costa Mesa who are attending our Newport Beach schools. And I think that, in fact, we ought to have some kind of crossguard enforcement that, that tracks students so that they go down these significant links or designated roads like Fifteenth Street, uh, where there are sidewalks in place. There's no reason why we can't have this now, uh, as corridors that are manned or volunteer help. I think I talked that, about that with you, uh, Mrs. Dixon, and, and I think that would be a, a great idea. And I know the people in this neighborhood would be glad to volunteer if that was going to be a viable solution. So besides education and enforcement, I think goes along with that, um, and yet, at the same time, I know our police force is under tremendous, uh, burden and pressures, uh, to, uh, uh, police other areas, and we're somewhat spread thin. But enforcement, I think, could be a, a huge, uh, uh, benefit for the neighborhood. And finally, if, uh, we're looking at priorities, uh, I think we've got safety down. I, I think that, uh, safety, uh, with how we have maintained these neighborhoods for years and years and years, and the support that we've had with our residents has been stellar. I think if we want to spend more money, we ought to be putting it into perhaps better lighting throughout Newport Heights. As you know, uh, most streets don't have streetlights. Uh, or, better yet, how about subsidize, uh, the utilities and telephone poles, and let's go underground? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Carrie Slayback. I live at four twenty-six Riverside. Whoopsie.
Pardon, pardon me.
Four twenty-six Riverside Avenue. I've, what?
Ma'am. Sorry. Yeah, we're gonna need you to not do that. Thank you.
What did I do?
No, 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 not you, ma'am. Behind you. But, no, no, you're okay. It wasn't, it's not you, it's...
Thank you. Okay, let me, let me finish.
Let's start the, sorry, just a moment. Let's start her clock back over. Sorry about that. All right.
Thank you. My name again? Anyway, I'm Carrie Slayback. I live at four twenty-six Riverside Avenue, and I have personal experience with an effective low-tech speed governor. My daughter lives in Manhattan Beach. Uh, I drive along Pacific Coast Highway at fairly high speeds, turn left onto Gould Avenue, a residential avenue, and it's downhill. They have a flashing sign, and it gives the speed limit, number one. And you gotta put on your brake to do it. And you know why people do? Because people like my daughter have got a ticket and warned the mother, and the police presence there is occasional, and you never know when he's going to be around. And I would like to suggest traffic control to look at two things. Residential area, flashing signs, number one, and number two, uh, occasional police presence, or more than occasional. It's effective.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel, um, my name's Jeff Ruder. I'm a sixty-seven year resident, and, uh, I live in a war zone. But I knew when I bought my house forty-two years ago, what I was doing. I lived directly across the street from Harbor High School on the corner of Fifteenth and Irvine. I have no problem with the high school, and when I bought forty-two years ago, forty-three years ago, uh, it was, it was busy then, but things have changed. And now, forty-three, or forty-three years later, it has become demonstrably different. Now we have electric bikes that go twenty-five miles an hour. Now we have, uh, it seems like a, a lot more people, uh, walking the area and then heading down Fifteenth Street to the west side. And since we put in the new sidewalks, which look beautiful along, along the path, they are magnificent. They're good. They work. They really, really do. But the whole area doesn't need them. It, it, it really doesn't need them. The two crossing guards, the two young, the two gals that we have at our intersection of Fifteenth and Irvine do a remarkable job. They own that intersection. I, I get nervous when I pull up the intersection. My house is right there. If there was some kind of an enforcement, and I'm here just to talk for one more second about the small branch of this big tree, you guys have your hands full. There's no doubt about that. This whole thing out here, they're all split up. But my little branch of the tree is that there's no designated drop-off area for Harbor High School, except for in front of my house, which is illegal. Couple times a day, for long periods of time, it used to just be a very short period of time, all the cars line up in all the red zones and everywhere else, and sit and wait for their children to get out of it. When the children come up, get in the car. The, the ones that are on the street are also loading and unloading, and there's just this mishmash like this, uh, looks like a hockey, it looks like hockey. And there has been a very, very tragic accident that happened directly in front of my house on the side. I have sixteen cameras on my house just for that reason, and it saved the guy from going to jail with my camera because that unfortunate accident was caused because the rules of the road were not followed. Period. And if we can enforce the rules of the road a little better, instead of having the kids coming the wrong way down the street at twenty-five miles an hour on an electric bike, and other car, other people walking down the middle of the street because they just got dropped off in that area, I think it would relieve, it would relieve the pressure that area immensely if there was some area where they had to drive to that was safe to drop everybody off. But right now, Fifteenth and Irvine, it could be on Irvine, it could be on Fifteenth, it could be on the other side of Irvine. It's a nightmare down there. The security of the, of the walking guards, they've got it handled, but you go twenty feet in any direction from the crosswalk, and it's a nightmare. Thank you very much, and I appreciate it. If we get some kind of enforcement down there, just for a limited time, to teach the students, they can't do what they're doing, I think it'd solve this problem without having to add, uh, the sidewalks, without having to add the widening of everything and the, and the bikes. Just teach them.
Okay.
Teach them how to, how to go about it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your help.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Counsel. My name is Chris Budnick, and I live on the corner of Florton and Clay. I addressed the council about eighteen months ago when the bike lane, uh, proposal was being discussed. And at that time, I really felt the city had already taken a number of steps that really did improve safety for the kids, and, uh, really addressed the legitimate safety concerns and avoided impacting properties in a negative way. To reiterate comments from a few, it seems like we're going backwards now. In regards to pedestrian safety for the students, uh, there really is no reason to add more sidewalks because you have, at least not on Clay, because you have sidewalks already on Fifteenth Street, it's just a block away. So if you look at the map, the students can easily use existing sidewalks on Irvine Avenue and Fifteenth Street to get where they want to go. It's really not necessary to change any residential streets into significant lengths at this point in time. Now with respect to the continuous crosswalk or, or continue, lack of a continuous sidewalk on Cliff, I'm gonna let the folks on Cliff Drive address that. And looking at that, I gotta believe there's a way to not have to put a ten-foot wide sidewalk in there, um, and, and impact, um, the, um, the properties, uh, so significantly, especially the retaining walls. One recommendation I would like to see included that I don't see in the presentation is a continuation of the sheroes on Clay east of Irvine Avenue. Contrary to what a few folks have said, I believe those sheroes do work quite well. I think they work very, very well. Not only are the bicyclists more cognizant of the cars, but the drivers certainly pay more attention to the cyclists because they now expect them to do pretty much anything within the lane. There's, there's no limitations on where the bikes can go, and everybody knows what it means to, you know, protect the right of way, uh, so to speak. And, and so in summary, I'd, I'd like to see this process regarding at least the student safety just come to a close. I think, as others have stated, we really got this nailed, uh, at this point. You know, for parents who really feel that it's super unsafe, they do have some options that they can consider, but for the folks living in the houses on the streets that you're potentially, you know, gonna put significant changes on, we don't have many options. It's hard for us to relocate. In fact, if we wanted to move right now, uh, we might be hard pressed to, to find somebody interested in buying until they get a resolution on, on the plans that the city has for those particular parcels. So I encourage the city council to reject any portion of this proposal regarding, uh, changing, uh, residential street to a significant link. And in moving forward with Cliff Drive, please reach out to the individual property owners and work with them to come up with something acceptable. I'm sure you can find a solution there. Now, if the entire neighborhood wants sidewalks, that's an entirely different topic, but if we're gonna talk about that for pedestrian safety purposes, we should include every street in the neighborhood, and that includes all the streets in Cliff Haven and all the streets north of Fifteenth Street. And there's something fundamentally unfair about targeting just a few streets. It's easy to get somebody to agree to impact somebody else's street for safety sake. The questions you should be asking are, do you want to see restricted parking in front of your house? Do you want a sidewalk in front of your house? Are you willing to tear out all the landscape and lose your trees to make room for such a sidewalk?
Need you to wrap up.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Scott Barnard. I attended Enson High School and arrived by bike every day. I went to New Barber High School, graduated in seventy-seven, rode my bike every day there. I have bought a house in Newport Heights on five-ten Tustin Avenue in nineteen-eighty-six. I've been there thirty-four years, raised two kids. Started with a ninety-hundred, eight-hundred-and-fifty square foot house that, like many people, would now fit in my garage. Our kids biked or drove a car eventually to these schools. It's not very far, but they'd still do that. I'm against the, uh, the, uh, significant link streets, and specifically on Tustin Avenue, for various reasons. I think the sheroes are great, and I share the comments that Ms. Maloof had. I think the sheroes have worked great, the education has been phenomenal. I spent with Mr. Senicori. I've met with three different, uh, school district, uh, trustees to watch what happens at Enson and help them understand what happens. And the crossing guards are great, the education of the kids is great, it's been fantastic. That's had more impact than anything else. But a little context on a couple of things. The kids used to ride bikes and skateboard, and there'd be very few walkers actually that come through at Tustin. The, there's a handful. Most all of it is bikes and skateboards. Well, they've all started to become electric bikes. So because the bikes are going twenty-five miles an hour, which is, I don't know, three times the speed they were going before, there's now about a third of them on the street compared to before because they're there so quickly. I think it's the most dangerous form of transportation out there. I ride sixty to a hundred miles a week all over the place, but the electric bikes are dangerous, but they do get off the streets quicker. There's not as many bikes on the street. I think that the, these gentlemen over here would have these sort of perfectly engineered streets, but the reality is, you shouldn't be putting cars on the same place you're putting the bikes, and even if the bikes are in a bike lane, many of the bikes aren't gonna go on sidewalks. They're more emboldened and dangerous as they come flying off the sidewalks because they feel like they have a right of way. And the reality is, the sidewalks aren't used by runners, and they're not used by bikes. So it's really makes more sense to, like the sheroes on Clay, they, the cars calm down, the bikes use them, it's a mix for a period of time, but it's not an all-day, all-year sort of thing. So when there's a few kids going to junior guards in summer, they still work. Uh, you know, if you had time of day, that only works on the school hours on the school day. So I think that the, the things they've done work well, but the sidewalks aren't just as simple as a gradual improvement. If you asked half the homeowners on Fifteenth Street how the gradual process worked, gentlemen, they did not work gradual. The city came along and dictated that we're gonna put in this public improvement on those homes whether they wanted it or not. And it isn't just a five-foot sidewalk. Every time you get to a corner, there's an ADA ramp to deal with, there's a fire hydrant somewhere, they have to go deal with that and provide the ADA clearance around that. There's a storm brain that's in the way, they have to deal with that. So it's a more impactful, and then as soon as you move back, you've got a retaining wall. The retaining wall is again, an urban element. So the street width, when you take away the trees and the landscaping and the pebble and the grass and the other things people got in their front yards, we have some tile pavers out there that are, make a great little sidewalk. At the end of the day, when you put all those things together, you would never think of asking the city to take out the ficus trees on Clay Street to put in a sidewalk there. And we tried to pay for ourselves to underground the electric, and we got a pop, opposition from half the residents. So don't even start on the next thing, which will probably be streetlights.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Nancy Scarborough. Um, I brought my own visual aid and a personal assistant to help me, um, show you. The proposed streets of Tustin, Clay, Beacon and Cliff have under, over a hundred and forty special city trees. Many of them are very old, and they would need to be removed in order to install sidewalks on those streets. City Council Policy G1 regarding Tree Retention, Removal and Maintenance of City Trees states that, quote, "City trees are an important part of the character and charm of the entire city and provide environmental benefits as well," end quote. Policy G1 further states that, quote, "During normal sidewalk curb and street repair, all steps shall be taken to retain special city trees," end quote. The removal of any number of these trees would contradict the City Council Policy G1. We've seen how passionate residents are about their city trees. We witnessed this recently with the Marine Avenue trees. We went through it with the Corona Del Mar trees on Ocean and Poppy, and also on the Peninsula and Main Street when they took down the ficus. Residents noticed and commented loudly on the diminished character of their neighborhoods. On Tustin, Clay, Beacon, Cliff, there are a hundred and forty trees that would be removed for the installation of sidewalks. Some of these trees are thirty years old or more, some over fifty years old. You can't buy a tree that old. It takes four, three or four generations, if you put a new tree in, three or four generations for a tree to mature to that shade canopy, um, of an older tree. And that contributes to the beauty of the neighborhood, which will be diminished for thirty or forty years. With... With all of the other problems that we have in front of us, including forty-eight-hundred RENA units, restricted, unrestricted ADUs, JADUs, SB fifty, if it gets signed into law, we, we're gonna have fourplexes scattered throughout the single-family home neighborhoods, climate change, we have a lot of other things to lose sleep over. I think keeping this in mind, that the planning to demolish a hundred-and-forty trees and install hundreds of square feet of concrete sidewalks is probably not a good idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, council. I live at twenty-nine forty-eight Cliff Drive. I'm at the corner of Cliff and Santa Ana, and I'm an avid cyclist, and I often go straight up to Clay and go through, often when the kids are on their way to the high school or the middle school. And I just wanted to put my experience, I've been in sort of, sort of the pack with them, and I think that, I forget what you guys call them, the, the posting, you know, the, the sheroes, the icons work great. I feel safe, and I think it's working. I, I don't think anything's broken on Clay Street. I don't think we need sidewalks. And I think the sheroes are adding a, kind of an awareness. And so I just wanted to put a shout out for that. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, next speaker. Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak after Mr. Klob? All right, come on, come on forward and line up if you wouldn't mind. No, I've seen you. All right, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protan, for letting me speak this evening. I'm Jed Robinson. I live at five-thirty El Medina. I have attended all of the traffic studies for this issue, and all of the meetings held in the community, and held some meetings in the community on this issue. I'd like to say just one thing because I think everything else has been expressed fairly well. In attending all the meetings, I've seen the studies for the walking traffic and the biking traffic. I've seen the studies for the improvements that have been done based on that information that the staff collected and is now implemented on Fifteenth Street. One of the things I have never seen in any of this is the problem that we're addressing. It's a proposed problem, but there's been no empirical evidence that there is a problem. So how will we determine if what you're deciding on for the future is gonna solve something that you haven't displayed currently exist? Is there congestion? Yes. Are there cars and children together? Yes. You're not gonna fix that because you're not gonna take away the schools. You're not gonna take away the cars, and everybody, as pointed out earlier, will travel to those schools twice a day for a ten to fifteen minutes. And I think that the improvements, based on the calculations that the staff did earlier with the charros and the sidewalk, have made a difference, and I think we should continue to see how that plays out, rather than now adding solutions to a problem that may not exist. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Charles Klob. I'm a nearly thirty-year resident of Newport Heights. I'm also the president of the Newport Heights Improvement Association, RHOA. I speak to you today on a familiar subject, modifying the streets of our neighborhood. First, a little history. Between us, Nancy and I have four boys. We moved here because it was affordable to us. We had a young family and wanted the best we could afford for their upbringing. We found it in Newport Heights. We raised three of them in the home we still reside. They attended Newport Heights, Enson, and Harbor. Now Nancy is a grandmother to an eight-year-old girl. I expect to be a grandfather in April to a baby girl. My son and his partner live on the Peninsula. Today, our boys are all adults living on their own. I have firsthand experience raising children here. Newport Heights remains the least expensive entry point to single-family homeownership in Newport Beach. The neighborhood is still largely full-time owner-occupied. We are experiencing an influx of young families. They are attracted by the uniqueness of the neighborhood, access to good schools and recreation, and lower cost of entry to Newport Beach. Developers have bought older homes and built large new homes, and families have remodeled their one-story homes. Folks who live here and move here know what to expect. A neighborhood without sidewalks and streetlights. This is part of the draw and makes it a destination. Now, following a traffic study done in May twenty-eighteen, where nearly everything recommended was adopted and implemented, we find ourselves here. We have seen one postcard inviting us to this study session at four o'clock on a workday. Once here, we are treated to a slideshow that proposes to change our neighborhood forever. Only, we aren't asking for any changes. Most real residents of Newport Heights have no idea what befalls them. Designing, designating Beacon, Clay, and Tustin significant-linked streets is a giant step toward the destruction of our neighborhood. By acquiring, requiring homeowners to pay for this, one of the most, is one of the most outlandish things I've seen before this council. First, there's been no study that has determined that sidewalks are necessary. Second, most residents of Newport Heights and all residents of the affected streets oppose this. Third, you are proposing we pay for something no one who lives here wants. And then there are the trees that would have to be removed at our direct expense. Did someone not learn anything from Marine Avenue? After an apparent false start, we are embarking on a general plan update to the circulation element. Why is this even being talked about before we complete that? Tonight, you will be holding a public hearing on cottage preservation ordinance. This has been widely popular with residents. By designating these streets as significant links, you are contributing to the defeat of the effectiveness of that ordinance. Instead of remodeling the cottage, all the money goes to unneeded sidewalks. And you lose the mature parkway trees. I'm gonna try something I tried earlier that seemed to work. Instead of trotting everybody down here to say the same thing, I'd like to ask everybody who agrees with me to please stand. Thank you for your service.
Yeah. I do like that one, Charles. All right. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Peggy Palmer, and I just have listened here about everybody saying how these sheroes have really worked and been effective in the neighborhood. So Carol forgot number six, which was her idea, is to paint the twenty-five mile an hour on, actually on the streets in bright green, just as the sheroes have worked very well in, in Newport Heights. And also, as we sit here tonight on February twenty-fifth, I want this meeting to resonate in your head when you hear the two-fifteen. Jeff, is that your phone? Anyway, I would like, on February twenty-fifth, you're gonna hear the two-fifteen garden project, and as Mr. Webb and also the city engineer can tell you, there is an influx of children going to and from the Peninsula. I do like the idea of improving safety around the Stacy Bond, if you will, project. Another issue, or actually, an observation, is when this, the schools start and end, the police volunteers, have the volunteers, they are extremely effective. I don't know why we don't use them more around the schools. I think that's, might be something we can look at. And lastly, on Riverside, there should be some crosswalk marking, some striping. I think we can all agree to some additional paint and striping. And then Irvine and Cliff needs a crossing guard. And I think if we see some striping, some changes that tell people that they're coming into a residential neighborhood and put it bright green, twenty-five miles an hour, if the sheroes work, that'll work as well. So here's some simple, cheap solutions that I think we can all agree on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Murphy McCann, and thank you very much for having this session and for doing the work that you have to have gotten us this far in providing safer routes for all pedestrians, kids, and people of all ages who walk, dogs, bike, and whatever throughout the Heights. You know, I, I've heard a lot of the commentary, and I just wanna support what you're saying by a couple of facts, just to note the recent deaths that have happened in the last five years in this neighborhood. And the near misses as well. There's been three on Clay Avenue, or Clay Street, from the stretch from Irvine eastward two blocks in the last probably two years. I think it's two years. So that's all in support of what you're doing. You know, the, I would like to either clarify or include a couple of things as when it comes to significant links. Tustin north of Fifteenth is a very, very busy street. It's only served by sidewalks on the Costa Mesa side, not the Newport side. And if you live on Margaret or Holly, you basi- if you want your kid to go to Heights, you basically have to drive him because there is no way to get across Tustin without either sneaking through people's front yards or somehow miraculously crossing the street every morning to the side where there are sidewalks. Fifteenth east of Santa Ana, again, there's a lot of housing going, or already in over there. There's a lot of traffic coming up on Fifteenth westbound, either towards Heights L or all the way to the high school in Enson. The other piece is Santa Ana, which, if you look at the details of the traffic study that was done a couple of years ago, the traffic counts were the highest on Santa Ana for that first block south of Heights L. And I would suspect it stretches for another couple of blocks beyond there. So the, as, you know, I would say that, you know, with regard to the streets that you've talked about, Cliff, Tustin, and Clay, just a couple of things to, to think about. Again, Cliff is, Cliff is a really fast street, and there's a lot of upward traffic, bike traffic that comes from Lido and the Peninsula to go up to Enson and High School. Please do something about that intersection. I think it begs another stop or something. I put together, I mocked up what that intersection could look like. So Tustin between Cliff and, and Beacon is, you know, that's just a real tenuous area. There's really bad visibility if you're coming south on Tustin. It begs more than just what's been contemplated here, I think. You know, what you're doing goes some of the way to solve the problem, but anyways, just consider that. The other thing is potentially a stop at El Medina and Cliff, where you have the John Wayne Park, and there's a lot of residents that cross the street there to go check out sunsets. And generally speaking, I'll, I'll keep this really short. There's a set of guidelines called NACTO that is, outlines, you know, recommendations for how you put together bicyclists, pedestrians, and cars on crammed roadways. That is really what we have in the Heights, and there are a number of recommendations in there that, if you could familiarize yourself with them, that would be great towards, it would be helpful towards sculpting the solutions as we look forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Sandra Ayers in the Heights, and I don't, I usually have notes, and I don't tonight, so I hope I don't forget my three really important points, but they're gonna be quick, so you can have dinner before your next meeting. First of all, I want to say that I thought Mrs. Dixon's comment was very good and significant and made my little brain start going, that you're hearing from the citizens, the people who live in the Heights, this is not something that we like. We like our community the way we like it, but, you know, people are here and saying, you know, with all the traffic and all the students. Well, I, I think what Mrs. Dixon brought up, the idea that why aren't we being more proactive with the school districts? Why aren't we out there saying there are these problems, these concerns that we have, and how can you help us with this? And I think with all the other great ideas that they've brought forward tonight, it's given another thing to say, like, I think as a city, I, and as a citizen, I would like my representatives to be working on that effort first before then coming in and significantly changing my neighborhood. If you could, you know, represent us and what we're really hoping for. We have an existing neighborhood, that's why we live there. If people don't like it the way it is, I would encourage them to go find a neighborhood that is the way that they want to live it in. And I'm not saying that, you know, that doesn't mean we don't make improvements, but at the same time, what you're talking about is significant changes, and that's a different thing. Thank you.
Thank you. So.
I'm not gonna speak a second time, but when you have an open session, before all my neighbors leave, I want to give everyone an update on Enson.
Okay. All right. Anyone else, just, I'm sorry, just a moment. Anyone else want, like to speak after? All right. Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Roberta Kennedy. I live at on the corner of Clay and Fullerton. My kitchen window watches everything that goes by, and I am unfortunately doing dishes a lot of the time. I thank you first of all for your patience with everybody, and everybody is really frustrated. What you have done so far in the last two years, in my opinion, from what I see go by daily, is a vast improvement. The share lanes work great. Actually, everything is working pretty good except for about the ten percent of people who are rude, inconsiderate, and don't believe that the laws are for them. This is true of thirteen-year-old boys, usually a group a year that like to zigzag up and down Clay Street or any other street, whether there's a bike lane or not. The children that do what they're supposed to do are fine. The bikers, the pedestrians, the dog walkers, everybody's great except for this ten percent. And I don't understand who is keeping pushing and pushing this issue when the neighborhood doesn't want it. I don't want people in my kitchen with me. You put this, the sidewalks and the setbacks and everything else, that's what they're gonna be doing, seeing what I cook. No offense. The other thing is, I am a senior citizen. I live on limited funds. I am lucky to have been able to stay in my neighborhood for over thirty years. I want to continue to do that. So tell me, because there's all sorts of panic going around about, oh, we're all gonna have to pay for this. Who is gonna pay for this? And why is it certain streets, and why not the whole neighborhood and everybody's property taxes get affected? Not just mine, because I'm in that first block. So, you know, has anybody told us how we're gonna pay for this, except charging the people who live there? Who are maybe not able to pay the assessment. Our property taxes are already sky-high. You know that if you live here. So I thank you for your patience, and I hope that you will take into consideration that a big share of us are not spring chickens anymore, and our money's gonna cease coming in, and we can't keep paying and paying for things that we don't need. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's bring it back. All right, we'll bring it back up here. Counsel, would anyone like to speak? Mr. Muldoon?
Could you place Consideration One up on the screen for the audience and those at home? Just so that people understand, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, if it's in blue and you make an addition, you will be required to put a sidewalk in front of your house at your expense, correct?
In blue is already existing. In green would be the proposed.
That's right. So if it's in green, if changes were made, which nothing's been discussed, and you made a change to your house, it would be at your own expense. The city were to say, we're requiring sidewalks you place in front of here, let's say, forthwith, it would be at the city's expense. So it's either the city's expense, or it's that someone who is, have a desire to expand their property taxes by increasing the value of their home. So for those who are situated with fixed income, it would not affect you on a financial basis. I still definitely understand the concerns on the physical basis. So could you bring us back to the slide that showed Clay Street? And it had the widths, had the basic, and then how additions would look like? Thank you. Okay, so thirty-six inches, sorry, feet, curb to curb. We need at least two ten-foot vehicle lanes by law, correct?
That's our minimum width, yes.
That's our minimum. And how, why does it need to be for parking?
Eight foot is the, probably the minimum you want to go.
So on both sides?
If you have parking on both sides, it's correct.
Okay, so what does that equal total, legally required?
Well, you need thirty-six feet, and that produces two ten-foot lanes and two eight-foot parking lanes.
Okay. I've gotta pull, yeah, make a pull out my calculator for this one. I'm so bad at math, guys. All right, so essentially, we are required, if, if you're saying the lanes must be ten, two of those, twenty, plus eight, plus eight. So we hit the thirty-six already, essentially, is what you're saying.
Yeah, it's the thirty-six lays out to that, two ten-foot lanes, two eight-foot parking lanes.
Yes. And what I'm trying to get is that there's no room to budge on the street without going into the right of ways. Is that correct?
If you want to expand, yes, you'd have to go out in the right of ways.
Okay. Now. Now, if it were to go in the right-of-ways, what I had hoped to see, and I didn't see presented, because there was a statement made that pedestrians have to be included, et cetera, was a simple, not that wide, one-way guarded bike lane. And I didn't see that presented. It could be, it could alternate based on the traffic flow and the day, but is that, is that something that even be explored? For example, on the side, on the left side in this screen, which is heading towards, that would be heading southeast, correct? Where that BMW isn't left?
I believe that, I think that's heading southeast. Yes.
So, if, if there were to be a protected bike lane only on that side, is that something, what would be the minimum requirements for feet? So, how much do we need to go in that right-of-way? Is that something that's even legally permissible?
I was just talking, excuse me, Mr. Summers. The guidance would be eight feet, because you'd want a five-foot bikeway minimum, and there's a three-foot buffer, whether it's a raised something, because you'd have vehicle access and exiting on that side against the bike lane. So, it'd be an eight-foot thing. You could do it, that's actually the direction would be, they'd want to travel south. You could make it a two-way, but it'd be a little confusing. Maybe you could switch during the day, with the kids file the proper signage, but I think eight-foot would be your minimum, if you did.
So, you would need a three-foot wide curb for someone to step now the vehicle, with then a five-foot wide, one-way bicycle lane, guarded by that curb?
That would be...
Then would abut the adjacent property landowners, or any leftover right-of-way?
Yeah, giving it's a 12-foot right-of-way there, you'd have another four foot to the actual physical property.
Another four foot, okay. Well, that is the kind of thing that I personally would be interested in, but I'm not interested in putting sidewalks and tearing trees down on the street, personally. I do, I do think it may be time for the city, on its own volition, to make these existing significant-lee streets uniformly curbed at our expense. And that's something that I'd be interested in exploring, but I would like to see, as Councilman Dixon requested, detailed synopsis of what that looks like now, what the cost would be, how many island slabs need to be linked together. I think you probably do a much better job than I can of explaining it. And I believe that school district would do us all a favor if they were to change Enzing to Cliff and Irvine. Regarding Tustin, the scenario I just walked you through on Clay, do you have a visual for Tustin? I didn't think I saw one. Okay. How wide is that street? Same?
Same width.
Okay, so, we're at a similar situation, where we have to cut into existing right-of-way, taking away some lawn frontage on adjacent property, private property, if we wanted a guarded bike lane to exist?
Yes.
Okay. That's similar, or something that I would be interested in possibly doing for one-way transportation on Tustin as well, but I, probably there, I would not be eager to see trees torn up and sidewalks put in. That's my position right now, but that could all change with more information.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, you're in favor of the bike lane, but you're concerned about tearing up the trees. I'm just thinking, the bike lane and sidewalk would do the same thing, we'd eat up into the frontage. Is that correct?
Yeah, so, if, this is a bad example, because if you see Clay, you can see that the trees are a lot closer, as that one lady in the red jacket showed. There's no room at all, versus perhaps on one side, there's room. I would need to see much more detailed schematics. But on these streets, I think it's very hard to make them both sidewalk on both sides. I just don't, I don't see it happening, and quite frankly, I'm not concerned about pedestrians, I'm concerned about children going to school on their bikes. That's what's driving me in this. And just because it's been heard before, from any commissioner, you definitely should understand, doesn't mean it shouldn't be heard again. This is a serious issue that Costa Masons and parents are concerned about. It's not fun, as we know from other incidents, but this is a work in progress.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions to clarify. Have we, in your considerations of different options, have we considered making a Clay Street one-way? Or Beacon Street one-way? Where we would then not have to go into the right-of-way, the public right-of-way, and we could have extra wide, in these areas surrounding the schools, schools, plural?
I don't believe we've looked at making those one-way streets. Again, that could be looked at. You're, I think you're referring to, if we make it one-way, we could lose one vehicle lane?
Yes.
And put striped bike lanes on the road. That is also a possibility. We could look at that, if you so choose to look at one-way streets in the Heights. Again, I don't have to look at...
Not necessarily plural, just...
Or one-way.
Related to the proximity to the schools, or the feeding into Irvine. Maybe just one block? I mean, we have one-way streets, many parts of the city, that require, particularly, you know, Coronado Mar, Valvoline, I mean, and also on the peninsula, that require an adjustment. Perhaps it's one way to consider, that we don't have to go eat into the expense of the public right-of-way, and it's really just about marking the streets. Also, and that would be a traffic calming measure as well, one-way. I mean, just for obvious reasons, you don't have cross-traffic, and kids on bikes, and people on pedestrians. One of the first speakers who spoke about what Costa Mesa is doing, and thinking about the future, I think that's an important concept. We have to think about the future, and be mindful of that. I don't know what specifically that means, we just have to be thinking of all uses. And also, as I say this, I'm wrestling with, we've referenced the new laws related to our neighborhoods that are now taking effect, that as more building occurs with ADUs and homes, there are no more, there are no more, there are no longer any parking requirements. So, we're going to be adding to the parking requirements on the streets of our city, or parking uses on the streets of our city, in the future. So, we have to factor that in, and from a safety standpoint. Mr. McCann mentioned some stop signs on Beacon, and I personally have experienced coming down Tustin as you approached Cliff, and the kids are there, and there's no stop sign at Beacon and Tustin, and it's a short distance between Beacon and Cliff, but it might be another traffic-safety calming measure, also at the corner of El Medina and Beacon. Stop signs are good. But I too want to say that traffic safety is an ongoing issue, and obviously, we up here and all of you are wrestling, and I think we all, with this issue, and I think we all want to minimize, certainly the cost impacts, and the changes to, we don't, I don't think anybody wants to change the neighborhood culture, but we have to be mindful that we have a lot of people on our streets, a lot of kids on our streets, and we have to be sure we are doing the right thing. And in that sense, in terms of our knowledge of incidents, I think it would be helpful the next time we, when this comes back to council, that we see actually traffic incident reports. We need data to support what we're talking about here. I think that works both ways. How many, I know, we've heard this before, some accidents don't get reported, but we need to start with data, too. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hurdman.
You know, I'm sitting here thinking irrespective of what takes place on the streets, sidewalks, bike lanes, narrower driving lanes. The amount of kids that are still attending Newport L, Enson, and Newport Harbor High will continue to populate the streets in one form or fashion. And I've heard a number of times this evening that crossing guards might be a solution, a partial solution to this, and our chief of police is in the audience. I'd like to know if the process for acquiring an additional crossing guard involves our police department. I know when parents approached me at the schools, I was responsible for requesting a crossing guard. My instructions to them were to put it in writing, which they did, and that triggered me working with local law enforcement to secure, or to look into, the monitoring of the intersection where a crossing guard was being proposed, to see if it would be warranted. So, John, what's, what's the deal here in the city of Newport Beach, as far as acquiring a crossing guard?
Certainly, Councilmember Herman. John Lewis, your chief of police, and we have studied crossing guards specifically in Newport Heights, and we have added, with the most recent study to certain intersections.
Right.
And the ones that were, that were added were along Irvine Avenue. But that's always something that we can continue to study. We have crossing guards as a contract service with the city, and there's a fee for those crossing guards at the various intersections, and that's something that we work with Mr. Webb's team to identify, and if there's a need there, then that's absolutely something we can look at, look at doing.
So, what's the process for parents who wish to see a crossing guard provided at a particular intersection? What do they do? Do they work through the principal? Do they work through us?
We, typically, when these, when these requests come, you know, they come to me, the police department, or through our school resource officers, and we work in coordination with, with Public Works, to determine whether or not that is something that we're going to feel is warranted at that specific intersection. So, it can start with either one of us, the conversation about it.
And what do we do? Do we put a black, do we, how do we, how do we determine whether or not a crossing guard would be warranted?
What we do is we work, we study those intersections, and we look, as Councilmember Dixon mentioned, as well, is that the accident data with the, with the volume that we're seeing in those areas of people crossing, and there's a determination that's made there. In terms of that methodology is left to our engineering folks, and then we facilitate the addition of the crossing guard.
Crossing guard, okay. Thank you, John.
All right.
So, parents, you know what to do now, if you're interested in securing a crossing guard for an intersection?
Yeah, and just to be clear, Chief Lewis, we have crossing guards at all three schools in this, in this particular area. I just want, I just want to make sure that's clear, 'cause I think one of our speakers previously had said they've never seen a crossing guard. I've seen many, so I just... Okay. All right. That's a different statement. Okay.
Mr. Brenner, to answer your question, yes, we do have crossing guards in that area, and as of, as of two years ago, we added additional crossing guards in that, in this general Newport Heights area that we're talking about, at specific intersections and locations.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Avery.
Yeah, I feel, you know, a number of speakers mentioned this, and I concur, that there have been a good number of improvements, and I think out of the outreach that we've done with the residents, and council's participation, and certainly staff's participation, we've presented lots of options, and there are lots of things that we could do further, but I think it's, at least to me, and this has been the case all along, since the very beginning, is that the consensus is to do everything we can to improve safety, without literally tearing the neighborhood up, and putting in sidewalks, and, and taking parking off the streets. And it's just, it's just a reoccurring theme. That's not everybody, but I believe it's a, it's a solid majority, and maybe that solid majority is not represented here tonight, but most of the people here tonight are, come to council, they pay attention, they, I think they do represent their communities. And I don't think we can ever build, obviously, anywhere near a completely safe neighborhood, and I'm still, I go to work every day down Tustin, and as many people have spoken, there's always a few kids who are really not paying attention and not following the rules, and the same is true with some drivers. So, that goes on all the time, and of course, it all, it just really scares all of us to death when we see that, because we've had some experience with it, and we don't want any more. But I think life being what it is, it's, there's a good chance we will see more, and that's just the nature of cars and people coming together out there. And we, I don't think there's any will to take cars off the streets, or change, make any significant traffic changes. But I don't think we should give up, or we should not stop trying to introduce changes, possibilities to the public. And I know this is, it's exhausting to do these meetings, and we've been through a lot. People have taken time, but I think we all need to be prepared to listen and take the good ideas, and if we can put in a stop sign that'll make a difference, we certainly want to do that. And so, the way we get these ideas, I believe, is from our community. They're the ones, we're all the ones that see what's going on out there, through our kitchen windows, and from our lawns, and our own experience in driving around. And so, I think staff and Brad, you did an excellent job presenting these ideas. I think there's still some, I would like to see Cliff Drive looked at, but in a way that would not tear, tear up people's, literally very costly infrastructure improvements they've made along that way. So, I don't know if that was a way to skin that cat or not. But overall, I, I wouldn't support anything beyond what I just stated, in terms of making further quote-unquote improvements for the Heights. I think the group has spoken here tonight, certainly, and I'm always available to hear further comments from folks if they weren't here, and, you know, take that to staff. And of course, people can communicate directly to staff with suggestions. We've got to keep them coming, because we just can't let up on doing the small things that, when they're all aggregated, make a considerable difference, which I think most people concur, has happened over the last few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everyone for coming. I know it's a pain, and I just learned a tremendous amount. If you hadn't come, I wouldn't have learned. So, but I do want to say that my district, which is connected to these streets, the word I'm getting are these sports cars on the Coast Highway come up here for their demo rides, and I heard that tonight briefly, and I know that's not what we're talking about tonight, but the darn streets connected. My, my district's street, this Cliff and King's Road are connected, so I just don't want to lose sight, I don't want this group to lose sight of the fact that these sports cars are coming up here, doing what they're doing. I've heard nothing but horrible stories about the speeding, and I know there's a group of folks that are trying, are going to try to present this to us again, but it doesn't have to do with the school, but it's the same street, same road, so I'm hoping we can come to grips with Cliff and King's Road to alleviate the speeding part, as well as obviously the schools. I have great concern for the schools, I went to all, all of them as well. So, please understand, those of you in my district, that I'm not going to drop the ball on these speeding sports cars. Thank you.
To make sure everyone gets to speak first, I'm going to go to Ms. Brenner first.
Oh, sure. Go ahead. I have so many conflicting thoughts, that I was trying to pull them all together into some semblance of order, and I'm having a really hard time doing that. Is a school district representative here? I thought someone's, are they interested in telling us what the proposed plans are?
You beat, you beat me to it.
Oh.
That's okay. You got it.
Sure. Good evening. I'm Adazarezni. I'm the administrative director of facilities for Newport Mesa Unified. We have been working with some of your staff on our plans. Our plans go back quite a while, even before you did your neighborhood study, and so we actually paused our projects at both Enson and Newport Heights, which are our parking lot reconfigurations, and some fencing work. So, now we're at the point with Enson specifically, where our plans are developed. We have gone to the Division of State Architect, who is the agency we work with for plan approval. We have those approved, we've bid our projects, and we are anticipating starting the initial phase of demo over what we call Ski Week, which is February 17th through the 24th. We are phasing the project at Enson, starting with a brand-new parking lot, which is where the old bike racks were, and so it's the cornel of Coral and Irvine Avenue. So, we're putting a new parking lot, and the intent is, is to create a staff parking lot, so we get more of our cars off the street and back onto our site. The other area that we're improving, other than just site fencing, is off of Cliff Drive, and we are building what we're calling a banana lot. So, essentially, the parents would come off of Cliff Drive, pull into a driveway with some angled parking, and that would become a parent drop-off zone, which would be on the district property itself, to again, help relieve some of the traffic out on the streets. We are, as part of the security fencing project, doing a single-point entry, so all of the kids will be coming in the front doors of the school, off of Clay, excuse me, Cliff, thank you, off of Cliff. So, we are trying to... So we are trying to have our students and our cars more so on our lots. We have been working with city staff on our plans. We paused our projects while you were doing your neighborhood study. We've received comments back from city staff advising us of some minor things that need to be changed. There weren't any real major changes. I think the only one comment that we weren't able to accommodate was for the banana lot off of Cliff. The city had asked us to shorten it in order to be able to do a left turn into the lot, but we would have lost a lot of stacking on our property and parking. So we left that in place. The restriction of being able to turn left is really a median in the street. I'm sure it was for...to slow down the speed on that street. But that could be removed if the city chose to want to have a left turn into the parking lot. So we're getting ready to start the demo, with the first phase of the project being that back lot. So we'll be building about 45 stalls in that back lot. That'll get constructed first before we do any of the improvements to the existing lot. So we'll make sure we open up that new lot before we move on to the existing lot, so we're not taking down more parking that's already available there now.
Trees.
We are taking down trees, yes.
Beautiful trees.
Sorry. Hang on. This is...no. No. Thank you. All right. Counsel, do you have any questions?
Am I the only one that's surprised that they're this far along and that we didn't really know what was going...I feel like I didn't know they were this far along on this project.
I can...if you could talk a little bit about what you've done at the board level, because you've run this project...staff's had a limited view of this project. In fact, I think we just saw something in January, a plan. We only connect with the encroachment print where they join the street. It's under the guidance of the state architect. It's a little odd. But the school district, I don't know what your hearing process is on your projects and how you reach out to the community?
So the district has a policy that anytime we do any major improvement like this, we have community meetings. And we also have...I've done board presentations at our board level. I've invited...so a couple of things with the site security fencing. Site security fencing is a very sensitive subject. Parents are concerned about their kid's safety on school sites, so that was a large element of it. Our extent of inviting city staff and city police was even to have your police present at our meetings, our public meetings, which the last public meeting that I had was in September, at the beginning of the school year. So we've had quite a few of them, and this didn't just happen. And I know that there was some question as to the amount of communication between the city and the district. And I have a comprehensive list of emails and times and dates that we've spoken. So we don't just go through the process of when we're at a point to build an improvement that encroaches into the city right away. Some of the things that we need permitted by you all is the new driveways. So we've coordinated all of that. Yes, the contractor will come on board, and he will submit his formal permit request and review of his permit to make those improvements. But we've had conversations well in advance of now.
Mr. Webb, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I was just confirming with Tony Bryan, who's the traffic engineer, who's seen this. And he has been working with the school district, but on a limiting basis. And why I ask the question, I don't know what kind of public comments, because you would review these projects through your own board and not through the council. We've seen limited of that. And again, maybe to Councilmember Brenner's item, I don't know where the council has seen the school district. Actually, it hasn't very been public to me, too. I know Tony's been seeing some glances. I don't know what the residents think. So that...what we control for the council's aspect is limited offsite. And we've been told they're going to change their gating plan, and we're trying to react to that. We can't really tell them not to, but we can say, okay, what are you going to do? They want to change their driveway locations, and we're trying to act to their plan there. We have limited ability to actually say, you can't do that. And I think that's the area where the comments concerns, they want to talk to the school district and see your plan, basically.
Well, then, perhaps...I'll make sure you get to speak. Don't worry. Perhaps the part of the answer right now is, let's, after the meeting, make sure that we are getting as much information on the plans as we can, and put it up on our own website so that our residents can see it. And reach out to the school district in the morning and see what we can do to accomplish that. All right. Ms. Brenner?
Part of my concern is that if we're talking about perhaps narrowing Cliff Drive and doing some traffic calming measures there, would there have been a way, if we were working together, for us to save the trees and work with you in order to develop what you need, but still...I mean, it seems like if we...I don't want to appear frustrated to you, because this is a frustration I've had for probably 50 years in Newport Beach, that it didn't appear as an outside, just citizen, that our school district and our council were always on the same page about things. And now I'm finally on the council, so it's like, maybe that frustration from years gone by is apparent. But I just feel like our school district and our city should be partners in anything that goes on in our community. So...and this might be an example of where we could have helped you if we were working together on that project.
I'm just going to say, I do feel like we reached out to the city on a regular basis for that type of coordination. So just whether, how far the information was shared with you all is kind of beyond my control. I...one of the protocols that our board adopted for our projects, in addition to just having a community meeting, was we use the same parameters when we're going through SEQA, California Environmental Quality Act. And so if we're having an impact to the environment, you have to notify residents within 500 feet of the property line. And so even for our public meetings, which don't require SEQA, whether it does or it doesn't, I have a community meeting, and we notify those 500...the residents within 500 feet, just to have a kind of a standard as to who we notify. In this particular case, the principal also sent out the notice to all of the families and all of the staff. So there was large coverage as to the meeting notification, and it's on our website. We do a blast of it for the school community. So I'm sure we can improve that, and I would be happy to be a part of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner?
Yes, I had a couple of things, just in general, about the traffic situation in Newport Heights. You know, I...as a longtime resident, I'm totally understanding the attitude of we like it the way it is, and we don't want changes. We bought this into this neighborhood when it was this way, and we don't want you to make any changes to that. But I also understand that we, as council, have to look forward. We have the responsibility of planning for the future. And unfortunately, we're not going to be able to limit future development as much as many of us would like. I mean, we would...if we could, we'd probably say, okay, we're done. No more development whatsoever. But it's not a realistic possibility. And one of my big concerns about the development that will come down on Pacific Coast Highway on Mariners Mile in as limited a form as possible, but it...some will come, is that they are going to drive through Newport Heights. They're going to go to 17th Street, to the market, and the dry cleaners, and the drugstore. And I want to make sure that we make those streets as safe as possible for the residents and the bikers. And, you know, as someone who did a lot of strolling in the neighborhood with five grandchildren and two children in the Newport Beach streets, I want to make it safe for walkers as much as just for bicyclists. So I was intrigued by what Brad had to say about that the sidewalks that are shared are maybe one of the most efficient ways to move both bicyclers and pedestrians through neighborhoods safely. I'm not real excited about this designated streets idea of certain streets being...it appears to me that that is like the school district says, and we say, our police department says, we cannot tell kids, this is the safest route for you to travel to school, because there would be a liability involved for us. And it seems like with these streets, that we are basically saying, this is the route you should take to school, that we're basically doing that. I'm more concerned about us gradually improving the entire neighborhood, making it safer. And, you know, I think the fact that there ...it's a 12-foot public...what do you call it? The part that is public right away, adjacent to the curb, that possibly we...in Corona del Mar, what they've done on the streets that don't have sidewalks is, some of the homeowners have put in meandering sidewalks that go around the trees. And it seems like there's enough space there to do something like that. But I really...I thought, all these years, that it was required, when you did new construction, to put a sidewalk in, because that's what most of the people in Corona del Mar do. And our lots are a lot smaller in the Village than the lots are in Newport Heights. But most of the people who do new construction put a sidewalk in. Some of them meander around a tree, and some of them are just adjacent. So I would be very interested in continuing to enhance those sidewalks as the years go by.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dixon.
Okay. I know this is really going to be...it's going to be an interesting challenge that ultimately we give to staff, and we're all done with this. Couple of things that I think are easy fixes, that I hope we don't have to wait for another public discussion. I would personally like to see how many...I'd like to see a map or the positioning of our crossing guards, and their hours of operation, just so we see how the coverage is working. I like the idea, in that context, too, one of the...I think it was Mr. Healy mentioned about, and he had told that to me earlier, on using the neighbors to be a part of, through the homeowner association, can have volunteers to position a few adults out there during school traveling hours, in the morning and the afternoon. Let's get the neighborhood involved, because you all come out and say, don't do it, but show us how you can help make this neighborhood safer. Another, probably low-cost or non-structural change is, why don't we consider, maybe it's the significant link is in our own policy, maybe what's one step below significant link, is just Safety Street. And Clay Street and Tustin and Beacon be designated as Safety Streets. And we do some painting on the streets to designate that these are, as I mentioned earlier, one-way, perhaps, at least Clay, to just to designate that. And we reduce the speed limit from 25 to 15 or something, or 20, just to enforce greater awareness and enforcement. Having, as one of the residents said, doesn't have to be a permanent officer, motorcycle officer, traffic control officer stationed there, but occasionally they're often enough to know that that could become a deterrent. I do...we didn't...we have not talked about this, so I just wanted to bring up, just to make sure that we're on...updated on the trash collection, waste management system, just to make sure that they are abiding by all the new rules that we've established in terms of their hours of operation in this school zone. I just want to make sure that they're compliant, full compliance. So that's obviously not an issue going forward. I guess that's where I am, is...so maybe I'm saying that none of these consideration suggestions, we go there first, that we try some of these more non-structural changes. I do think that people...I've talked about this before, in the Lido blinking crosswalk we have in Lido Village, I can't tell you how many times a day that I'm stopped at...I'm stopped to let pedestrians go in front of stopped cars, and the lights are not blinking. And I'll roll down my window, and I say, please push the button. And then I think I've said people use unfriendly language and hand gestures. They probably don't understand what I'm saying. I'm just saying, push the button, save your life. Anyway, it's just, we have to go...my point is, we have to go over and above common sense reasoning to communicate to children and to adults that we have laws in this city. And we probably have to use visual reminders, very strong visual reminders, to get people to slow down. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'll just say a couple of things. I agree with the vast majority of what Ms. Malouf said. It sounds an awful lot like, at this point, it's a significant enforcement issue. So, quick reminder, when we started doing parking enforcement in Corona del Mar, when residents were complaining, the vast majority of people who got tickets were residents. So if you're asking for more enforcement, understood. Just don't come back here to tell us about your speeding ticket. But I think that that's a fair point. So that would be...that'd be something I'd suggest we discuss a little bit with our police department. The other thing is, if you have questions for the school district, after hearing what you heard tonight, please ask. Ask. So I would just suggest very strongly you ask lots of questions of the school district, as well as attending their meetings, because I suspect you have some questions. All right. Mr. Avery? Oh, did you want to speak? Okay. Mr. Avery?
I've felt that the speed limit, even 25, you know, if you're rolling along at a solid 25, especially when the neighborhood's, you know, impacted with travel by all forms, something jumps out at you. You're moving pretty fast. But I think I understand that that's a state-mandated speed. Can we actually change that in a neighborhood?
Tony, could you come answer that question? I think there is a state law governing that net...profactive speed.
Staff, Tony Bryan, City Traffic Engineer. There are certain circumstances where you can actually reduce the posted speed limit to 20 miles an hour. I'd have to check the vehicle code, but I don't believe that typical school zone is...you can post it at 20, but you can...I mean, it is the standard speed limit in a school zone is 25 when children are present. Some of the 20 mile an hour zones might be around senior centers or within park areas, but we can double-check the vehicle code.
And then, Tony, could you clarify in the local streets around it, not a school zone, can we go below 25 miles an hour?
Well, if it's adjacent to the school itself, then we do post 25 when children are present.
But like on Clay or Tustin or...
If it's adjacent to the school itself. So Irvine, 15th, those streets are posted 25 when children are present.
But it's possible that we could apply to the state and maybe get it moved to 20?
We can go back and look at the vehicle code and see if that's a possibility.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Brenner?
I just...I was picking my granddaughter up at Corona del Mar High School today, and according to what I saw, people can't even go 5 miles an hour around the school. So it may not be necessary to post it as a lower speed. But what I did want to say is that I would like to move forward on the suggestions that we've heard about traffic calming measures on Cliff Drive. We've been hearing for months, months, about the sports cars that use that as a racing zone. And I know that on 19th Street in Costa Mesa, when they put in their traffic calming measures at their corners, I started using 19th Street less, for one thing, and it definitely slows down the traffic. And when you make a turn off of 19th onto another street, you have to go really slow to do that. And so it seems like that street is a problem. It's been a problem that we've heard from numerous citizens, and we've heard from Duffy and Brad and other people, that that street is a problem. So if we could move forward with traffic calming measures there, I would support that.
Okay. Mr. Hurdman?
Just one last thing. I heard the suggestion about possibly using parents or individuals from HOAs or volunteer parents for getting kids across the street or supervising them to and from school. You just can't do it. You absolutely cannot do it for liability reasons. So don't walk away thinking that we're, as a body up here, are endorsing that or suggesting it.
All right. So, yeah, I'm not sure that...we've given you particularly clear direction on this one. I'm not sure we're going to be able to, frankly. So my suggestion would be, take this one, digest it. I will say, I think that a lot of the discussion up here will probably need to be covered anyway during the circulation element discussions during the general plan process. So there's a good chance that a lot of that will need to be discussed there. But take a listen to what we've discussed up here, and if there are things that are...I hesitate to say this, but fairly non-controversial, they can be done. That'd be great. Anything else, we need to do more public outreach. And I think we'd probably need to...for those specific ones, we'd probably need to go through A1 for council members, because I just don't think we have general consensus on which direction we need to go with this one. So unless...from the council level, that is, of course, if the city... So unless, from the council level, that is, of course, if the city manager were to feel that she had consensus, she can bring something forward. All right. Members of the public, thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate hearing from you. You're always, of course, welcome to send us notes and show up again if you'd like to, but just want to say thank you. All right. We're gonna move to comments, no, we've closed public comments. So we're gonna go to public comments on non-agenda items. So if you, if you, if you're about to talk on the item that we just had, that is, okay. All right, go ahead.
I'm here to speak about the improvements that Newport Mesa Unified School District is proposing to Ensign School. And I, I don't know if any staff or, and I'll notice that Ara's leaving right now. I think you'd want to stay for this. I don't know if any of our council members or any of the staff have met with any of the trustees of the Newport Mesa Unified School District or with Ara. Yeah, everyone who's met with somebody from the school district, raise your hand.
That's not how this public comments.
That's all right. So I've met with three of them, Barto, Yelsey, and Flor, and walked it with Mike Sinacori to understand what they're specifically proposing. The parking lot on Irvine goes from Beacon to Coral, and the bike cage goes away and the building, which is just recently demolished. There'll be a new bike cage further in the blacktop area from that. They initially proposed a single point of entry. They think it's safer, and they can certainly monitor who comes on and off campus, but it also puts all of the car drop-off, the pedestrian, and all the bikes at a single gate. So we pointed that out to these trustees because we don't think you want to put all those things together in a funnel, and having that up on Cliff Drive didn't make sense either. It works very well right now when people can come in, bikes and pedestrians, at two different places in the back of the field. They were sympathetic with that. They're being, they bought into, the school district has bought into the idea that a single point of entry is the best security, which is true if you had a concrete wall around it. But when you have an open fence, you know, a shooter could shoot through the fence anywhere around the campus. Obviously, that controls entrance and access in and out of it, and that works during the school day. When I spoke today to Barto, she said that the current plan, unlike what Ara suggested, that the current plan is not to do the banana lot on Cliff because that really doesn't get them anything. It does take out all the trees. It's only for drop-off and pickup in the morning and afternoon of students, which really doesn't create a problem out on Cliff. Yes, they double park there, but making the banana lot doesn't really change the congestion and number of cars. Barto indicated that the sense of the board was that they wanted to maintain the entrance gate off of Irvine Avenue at Beacon, that that was helpful. I think the most significant thing to me personally, besides thinking of changing all these patterns, which the school district can change at any one of these three schools, where the entrance and exits are, but to me personally, was that you no longer have access to the fields of Newport High School. And I get that there's a big investment that's been made there, and they want to keep it and maintain it so it's secure and safe. But they've also closed off access to the fields at the grammar school. And with these improvements, the fencing around the school's higher, and it will be locked off from any neighborhood access. So the Newport Heights area and that area, Costa Mesa, has no public fields for kids to go play on after school on the weekend. So where kids used to play a pickup game of baseball or, you know, frisbee or whatever on a weekend, they can't have access to those fields. Now, again, what Barto told me was that there's a card access system that would be available for sports leagues. So AYSO, baseball, football, some organizer would have a card key that would get them in, is the idea. I don't know if it'll actually happen, but it would, what I'd like to see is the city, like they've done in some other instances with the school district, is have a system in place where parks and rec person on a Saturday when there's not organized games can open the fields up and then close them down at the end of the day. Otherwise, we lose all our parks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please, on non-agenda items.
Since I'm here, I am still Peter Boyd, and I still live on San Ana. I'm just wanting to put a plug in for the literacy project that the city does through the library. I'm a tutor there. I'm not asking for a proclamation or a photo with you, Mayor O'Neill. But that is a really great resource. It's been really rewarding for me to help somebody. My, the 2T I work with is a 69-year-old man who reads at basically a kindergarten level, and I've been working with him for about the last year. I just think it's a really great thing for us to support as a city to improve our fellow citizens. So thanks for your support of the library and the literacy project.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Okay. All right. So we don't have closed session tonight. We do have a regular meeting that starts at 7:00. We will have a remembrance of those people in Newport Beach community that we lost on Sunday at the beginning of our meeting. So we'll stand adjourned until then. Welcome to Newport Beach. We are going to start the regular meeting at 7:00 of, for January 28th, 2020. Madam Clerk, roll Paul, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. So as mayor, I'm able to move the agenda items around just a bit. I'm gonna be moving a portion of the city council announcements up directly behind the pledge of allegiance for a special remembrance of those who passed on Sunday. We'll take a break after that remembrance and then come back to move through our regular agenda, which will include normal council announcements. So please stand with us as we have the invocation by Reverend Mary Cypher's and remain standing afterward for the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Diane Dixon.
Will you join me for a moment of centering? Spirit of life and love, we thank you for the holy presence that you bring to our world, the gift of life that flows through each of us and that reminds us, each moment is a gift. I ask that you bless and guide our council members as they continue to bless and guide our community, and that you guide each of us who are citizens of this community, that we might truly live this gift of life to the fullest, to be blessings, to be gifts, so that all might know this precious gift we call life. In your holy and loving name we pray. Amen.
If you'd please join me in Pledge of Allegiance to our great nation, please place your hand on your heart. Let's begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
... of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands. One nation under God, in liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, our city is in mourning. Grief and despair have engulfed our tight-knit community because we lost eight community members on Sunday. Three families in our community lost mothers and daughters, two families lost fathers, and we lost neighbors and friends. Our city council could not start tonight any other way than by remembering each one of these well-loved men, women, and young ladies. Each one of us will read passages, and at the end, I'll ask for a moment of silence. Mayor Pro Tem Avery.
John Altobelli. Few in our community have had such positive and lasting impacts as John Altobelli, a devoted husband, father, and beloved baseball coach. As the longest-tenured baseball coach in Orange Coast College history, John was a leader and mentor to generations of young athletes. In a career lasting nearly three decades, he led the OCC Pirates to four state community college championships and more than 700 wins. In 2019, he received the prestigious honor of being named Coach, National Coach of the Year by the American Baseball Coaches Association. John was also a wonderful husband and father. His wife and children spent years on the baseball field at Orange Coast College, attending games and being a part of it. And he really had the pleasure of wrapping his family into his career. And it's mighty sad. He is survived by his son JJ and his daughter Alexis.
The tribute to Carrie is different because Carrie was foremost a mom, and it was actually hard for us to find information about her. So this was written by one of Carrie's loving mom friends. She said, "Typical of many moms, the accomplishments of Carrie Altobelli are not found in a resume about herself. They are found in the accomplishments of her family, which was everything to her. Her husband and children always came first. She was loyal to the court. Just as she was a devoted wife and mom, she was a devoted friend. You didn't have to ask for her help, she was already at your doorstep before you could even call or text her. Carrie never took no for an answer. She volunteered at her daughters' schools. She supported her husband at all his baseball events. She could have played Wonder Woman with her beauty, poise, and organizational skills to get any job done. Carrie enjoyed the surf and sand. An ideal day would be with her family at home or at the beach, or really anywhere that they were all just together. Her children, JJ and Lexi, are surrounded by family and loving friends." And as my daughter said, who is one of her best friends, "My daughters lived in Newport her whole life, and she said, 'I've never been more proud of the Newport Beach community.' They have come together with offers of everything that could possibly be imagined. And someone came to my door today and gave me a card with $350 gift certificates for the kids and didn't want their name to be used, just wanted me to give that to them, and also had signed up on the GoFundMe pages. So our community is devastated, but they are filled with love."
Alisa Altobelli. Alisa Altobelli may not have followed her father into baseball, but she definitely shared his passion for sports. Her love was basketball, and she was a standout among her Mamba's teammates. Alisa was an eighth grader at Ensign Intermediate School and previously attended Mariners Elementary. The principal at Mariners remembers her as an incredible all-around person, a friend to so many because of her kind heart and positive nature, an amazing competitor, a very talented athlete, but also extremely humble. There will be a memorial for Alisa at 5:00 PM Thursday at Mariners Park, and she is survived by her sister Alexis and brother JJ.
Kobe Bryant. Much has been written and said about the incredible achievements of the legendary sports icon, Kobe Bryant. Five NBA titles, two Olympic gold medals, 18 All-Star appearances, and one MVP award in a storied 20-year career with the Los Angeles Lakers. But he was something more to those of us in Newport Beach. He was part of our community, a devoted father, husband, friend, neighbor, and mentor. He was deeply involved in our local schools and in youth sports. Kobe was always striving for success in everything he did, a champion and inspiration on and off the court. He is survived by his wife Vanessa and daughters Natalia, Bianca, and Capri.
At age 13, Juju Bryant had just started to grow into potential as a basketball player. It is being reported that her father set up her athletic ability. She's better than I was at her age. She had dreams of playing basketball for the University of Connecticut and professional and professionally in the WNBA. She was a determined competitor and leader with talent and a work ethic that served as inspiration to many young athletes. Even more important than her athletic ability, she was a light to those who knew her. A star student at Harbor Day School, she was remembered this week as always smiling, a strong leader, the level of maturity beyond her years. She is survived by her mother Vanessa and sisters Natalia, Bianca, and Capri. A special prayer goes out to you four. There's no greater pain than the loss of a child and sibling. Thank the Lord Jesus that she was at church with her father earlier that morning, and like a light that never dims, she'll be with the Heavenly Father for eternity, and we will see her again. To her friends, classmates, and the younger members of our community, I have this message for you. Do not despair or be afraid. Everything is in God's hands, even the ball.
Sarah Chester. Sarah Chester was a devoted wife, mother, and active volunteer in her children's school communities, first at Harborview Elementary and then most recently at St. Margaret's Episcopal School in San Juan Capistrano. She was a teacher at Tustin Memorial Academy before leaving education to spend more time raising her family. In high school, she was a standout soccer player. She is described by her brother Andy as one that everybody counted on, strong, kind, intelligent, funny, beautiful, and was everything to us. Sarah is survived by her husband Chris and sons Hayden and Riley. Sarah is, was also the niece of close college friends of mine, my husband, USC football great Bob Chandler. Bob Chandler died 25 years ago on Sunday, the same day that Sarah died, 25 years later. And they were both at a very young age. She was, I think Sarah was 38 and Bob was 41, a tragic loss of two people up in this family I've known for 50 years at such a young age. She was a remarkable woman.
And 13-year-old Peyton Chester. A smile and personality that would light any room is how her family described Peyton. Peyton had a passion for basketball and dreamed of one day playing for a college team and then professionally. She attended Harborview Elementary in our community from kindergarten through fifth grade. Her former principal at Harborview recalls Peyton as one of those kids that everyone was drawn to because she was so genuinely kind. She went out of her way to make sure people felt comfortable. And as been mentioned already, Peyton is survived by her father Chris and brothers Hayden and Riley.
Christina Mauser was a loving wife, mother, teacher, coach, and athlete with a passion for youth sports. She was a teacher and coach at Harbor Day School for 11 years before joining the Mamba Sports Academy as the top assistant coach and defensive specialist, with a coaching style her players described as competitive, positive, and encouraging. At Harbor Day School, she helped lead the eighth-grade girls' team to their first championship. Many of us also knew her as the manager of her husband's band, the Tijuana Dogs. She is survived by her husband Matt and three children, Penny, Tom, and Ivy. We also express our sympathy to the Zobian family and our neighbors in Huntington Beach who lost two residents. Please join us in a moment of silence.
We thank you, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break, so we'll, we'll get the meeting started in about five minutes. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, notice the public, please.
The city provides a yellow signing card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the City Council. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
All right. Thank you. We'll now go into City Council announcements and oral reports from City Council on committee activities. As a reminder to my colleagues, if you could please limit it to five. If you cannot do so, we will bring it back at the end of the meeting. All right, Mr. Hurdman.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. When I say "we," I'm talking about city staff and myself have finished two informational town hall meetings on Babo Island regarding future infrastructure projects, very well attended, and I feel like most island residents are very well-educated now about these future projects. Attended CDMRA Residence Association Meeting, Chamber Government Affairs Meeting. We have reorganized and repurposed the city's Aviation Committee, and I've attended all of the subcommittee meetings in addition to last night's Aviation Committee meeting. And then I think the other two will be covered probably by other council members. That was five, Mayor.
You're getting good at it. All right, Ms. Dixon.
Yes, just a couple of announcements. I returned this afternoon after being in Sacramento yesterday and today, attending on behalf of the city, the ACCOC, Associated California Cities of Orange County. Two full days of meetings with legislators and key staff. Just a couple of highlights. Met with a senior director, not the director, but the senior director of Housing and Community Development, and I was with representatives of about 25 other Orange County cities, so we're all on the same page as far as what we're all dealing with, all the cities are dealing with as far as RENA, as we know, and affordable housing, and the new laws that were assigned, new legislation that was signed into laws relating to land use and zoning, SB 330. And then the bill of Senator Weiner of San Francisco that is a current session bill that is going to be voted on the floor of the Senate tomorrow, SB 50, which will have impacts on all cities. Anyway, she heard an earful from all of the city representatives of the burdens, is the point I made. First of all, we have advocated in a letter to the state to delay the implementation of the housing element or the due date, which is currently set at October 202021, and we'd like it delayed. And she interestingly said, "Oh, and no one's ever asked about that." So I made that clear that that's important. I also emphasized the burden that all city staffs are under in community development and planning, just dealing with the compliance issues on these new laws. She said, "No one's ever complained about that." She also said, "There's money available in state grants to assist." I said, "We can't get a consultant because they're so busy." And she said, "Oh, there's planning staff available at the state level to help cities with their planning. Apply for a grant." And so I was texting Mr. Juerges during this meeting, and I said, "Did we apply for a state grant?" And he said, "Yes, we did." So that's good. And then we met with Senator Morlock, and during the senator's presentation, there was a rally forming on the Capitol steps, no on AB 5. So there are efforts to either repeal or significantly amend AB 5, which is the independent contracting law that just took effect. Announcement, I will be having a District One Town Hall on Monday, February 3rd. One of the key items is the snowy plover matter that affects the oceanfront issues on the peninsula, and so I urge all residents, especially from that part of the peninsula, to be attending. So 6:30 PM at Marina Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muldoon. Thank you. Ms. Brenner.
I attended the Doris Kearns Goodwin Lecture at part of the Witty Lecture Series, and it was standing room only, and they had a waiting list, and she was lecturing two different times in our city. It was so well-attended. Several people said to me, "Gee, too bad we don't have a lecture hall so we could actually see better and hear better." So that was interesting. I also attended the OC Forum State of the County where Lisa Bartlett spoke, and the two authors of the Chapman Study on Housing were there, the ones that disagree with the other economists who say we need to have so many additional housing units. So that was interesting. And tomorrow evening, we have a community conversation on mental health here in the council chambers, and this came about as a result of some of our task force members recognizing that on the homeless issue, so many people are concerned about the drug-addicted and the mentally ill, and so our committee suggested that we put together an information evening to find out what the state's doing about that and get some other... We have a panel of speakers, and so that'll be 6 o'clock tomorrow evening. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. So I went to Washington, DC last week with Scott Cunningham, who's on the Harbor Commission, and my fellow councilman Brad Avery. This is my fourth trip there, and we made it just in time for the first day of the impeachment. So that was fun. So just a quick update, after four years of going there and wandering around begging for this money to dredge our harbor, we have finally, I think, broken through and are talking to the right people, getting answers we like to hear, but it's still an ongoing process that will continue to need nourishing and work, and we're very on the positive side of this. It's a $23 million ask, of which may come in two payments, but we're encouraged that it's looking positive, that we may be dredging soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Avery.
Representing the city and Mayor O'Neill, I attended the National Association of Mayors in Washington, DC, and I flew out with Harbor Commissioner Cunningham and Councilmember Duffield. And when I wasn't in some of the sessions, I was trying to help as much as I could, represent the city along with Duffy and Scott at a meeting at the Eisenhower Building next to the White House with some aides President Trump's and representation from the Army Corps of Engineers. So I can just say that a national mayor's meeting was an adult portion. There was a lot going on. There was mayors from big cities and small cities, and their struggles and their complexities. All of it made me appreciate Newport Beach. And so we're an exceptional city in many ways, and a lot of times in that crowd, it doesn't pay to bring it up, actually. Some of the things go on, and they're our good fortune, and we should always keep that in mind. And the only thing else I want to say is Harvard Commissioner Cunningham and Duffy are really something on this dredging issue. I should also say that our Public Works Department with Dave Webb and Chris Miller, it's a solid team, and the city was well-represented in Washington, DC. It has been, continues to be. I think it's gotten better. And Duffy's passion for doing this, and Scott is an absolute tiger going after this. And so I believe we will get the harbor dredged, and the federal government, I think, is willing to help us out because I can't imagine another city working harder on an initiative like this than we've done. Thank you.
Thank you. So I was able to attend with Councilmember Hurdman the Muth Center Volunteer Day, where they were able to pull out 125 bags of trash out of the back bay, which was fantastic. Thank you for doing that. The City of Hope is now in Newport Beach, so I attended with the majority of our council, their ribbon cutting. That would be a phenomenal addition to our healthcare services offered in Newport Beach. Well, the reason I want to say thank you to Mayor Protam Avery for attending the mayor's conference. Instead of going there, I went up to CalPERS for a stakeholder meeting with Councilmember Dixon and our finance director. I will be honest, I did not come away optimistic, but I was glad to be there. Then 10 young men were awarded their Eagle Scouts badge this past weekend, and I was pleased to be a part of that. A couple notes on vigils. Our community is holding them. I attended one in Newport Coast, and I attended one at Harbor Day yesterday. And then, as Councilmember Duffield mentioned, on Thursday, there's going to be... There's going to be another one for Alyssa Altabelli at 5:00. And I just want to say to everyone who's organizing those, thank you for doing that. It's a really, it is a great community-led effort that's happening for everyone we lost, so I just want to say thank you. And then, real quick, Wednesday, tomorrow night, there are the Cert Awards, and then Friday, there's the Christmas Boat Parade Awards. So with that, public comments on consent calendar, Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 15. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed in our consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the forum listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right. Are there any items you'd like to pull from consent calendar? Mr. Hurdman.
None.
Ms. Dixon.
None, thank you.
Mr. Muldoon.
No, I'd like to lodge a no vote on item eight.
Okay. Ms. Brenner.
No.
Mr. Duffield.
I also would like the no vote on eight.
Mr. or Mayor Protam Avery?
None.
All right, and I have none. Given that we don't have any to pull, we'll invite public comments on the items for the consent calendar. And Mr. Tanner approached me beforehand, just everyone understand he's going to have an extra minute. His topic's going to be to the RENA allocation issue and the exception to prove the rule. I'm giving someone extra time. Anyway, all right. Go ahead, Mr. Tanner.
Thank you, David Tanner. I'd like first to start out by commending the city for its efforts on the Shake Alert West Coast earthquake early warning system and its steps that it's taken to implement this. This is a really big deal for the safety of the citizens of Newport Beach and the effectiveness of our emergency responders. There was a presentation given on December 17th. It's on the city's website. This program has been in development since the 1980s with federal, state agencies, universities, Caltech, University of Oregon, University of Washington, UC Berkeley. This is a really big deal, and I commend the city for taking the action that they have. So what I wanted to talk about tonight is what this video presentation provided in the way of information that is important to the city. And I'm going to summarize what's in this video, and I'm going to summarize the summary that I wrote so that I don't take up much time. In the video, the presenter, Margaret Vincini from Caltech, talked about the Big One, the big earthquake. It's a seven-plus magnitude earthquake, and she said that those occur, on average, about every 150 years. The last large one was in 1857. That means that the next one, on average, is forecasted to occur in 2007. So we're overdue. What she also said was that the USGS, United States Geological Survey, forecasted a 99% chance of a magnitude 6.7 earthquake in Southern California in the next 30 years, and a 75% likelihood of a magnitude 7.0 or greater in Southern California in the next 30 years. She went on to state that earthquakes, the severity of the earthquakes, have many factors, one of which, which is important, is the soil, the underlying ground, and in particular, the sedimentary formations that underlie the LA Basin, Orange County, Newport Beach. And she said that because of those sedimentary locations, the liquefaction potential, the settling potential from ground shaking is high in those areas, in the valleys within Southern California with sedimentary deposits in them. So she went on to say, and I think this is, we all know this, but it's not my words, it's the federal government, the state government saying this, what are the effects? And this is current with current building permits from the Big One. What's going to happen to us? She said, "Widespread damage affecting eight counties in Southern California. $213 billion in damages. 300,000 buildings significantly damaged and widespread infrastructure damage. 270,000 displaced persons, 50,000 injuries. Water, electricity, gas, telephone services interruption, emergency responders overwhelmed, 18-month recovery period anticipated, along with an economic shock to our businesses." So I have some recommendations I'd like to make to the city. First, if you haven't already, please watch this video. Hear it for yourself, so you don't take my word for it. Increase public awareness. I think the public needs to know, they need to know what the city is doing, the great steps it's taking, what they should be doing also. Consider these forecasts in the general plan update. Provide SCAG additional information identifying the city's liquefaction, earthquake hazards. Share this video with SCAG. And elected officials involved in housing stimulus legislation. Request and offer to coordinate a presentation by Margaret Vincini to SCAG and state legislatures prior to SCAG's RENA allocation. Let them hear this for themselves and ask questions.
All right. Wrap it up quickly.
Okay, I'm going to wrap this up. "We do not build high-density housing at the base of unstable hillsides, identified landslides, or avalanche hazard areas." Of course not. So why is our state legislature mandating we build significant new housing in high-liquefaction hazard areas subject to catastrophic effects in the event of a large earthquake? There is an apparent conflict. It appears housing stimulus laws, which are of statewide importance, are paramount to public health and safety. I'm asking the city to consider if the legislature has followed the law in enacting housing stimulus laws, and if an amendment or modification to these laws is not warranted. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, on the consent calendar items, next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and members of the City Council. My name is Bruce Bartram, and I'm speaking on behalf of still protecting our Newport spawn. I'm the president of Spawn, and I'm addressing item consent item number seven, the RENA allocation resolution. First of all, we'd like to thank you for tackling the housing issue. We appreciate that you are working with other cities and have followed suit with tonight's resolution and letters from the city. In sending you our resolution with endorsements, we wanted to accomplish several things. In preparing the resolution, we wanted to raise awareness of our members and the general public concerning the housing issue that is facing the city, and we wanted to express our wish to work with the city so we can resolve and hopefully reach reasonable housing numbers and express our wish to reach a consensus regarding the ultimate general plan housing element. Also, in our resolution, we wanted to express the hope that in addressing the housing crisis, we not lose the goals of our general plan policies and goals already in place. Mentioned twice in our resolution is the goal of preserving banned... Mentioned twice in our resolution is the goal of preserving Banning Ranch as open space. It is our hope that that goal isn't lost in addressing the housing crisis. This, because the Banning Ranch Conservancy appears to be close to achieving success, we all should be aware of that the Conservancy recently received a donation in the sum of $50 million towards the purchase of the property as open space. That is a tremendous achievement, and the city should keep that in mind in trying to address this housing issue. With that, we'd like to thank you for your hard work in addressing the housing issue, and it is our hope that we can work with you and resolve this issue to the benefit of our whole community. Thanks again for your efforts.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Phil Greer, and I'm going to do my broken-record routine on consent item number four, which is the lobbyist registration. I've attended all of the public meetings that you have held, and I have to say that Mr. O'Neill, Ms. Avery, and Ms. Brenner, you've done a remarkable job in bringing out the people, getting input, and doing the things necessary to open up a dialogue and a conversation. And the same goes for Aaron Harp. I think he's been very open about how this process might work, and it is a difficult process. My issues are the same issues that we've had from day one on this, and there are two. One is the lobbyist registration and how you comport that with certain requirements that I have, that Mr. O'Neill has, Mr. Muldoon has, as attorneys in dealing with the confidentiality and fiduciary obligations we have to our clients. And I think there needs to be something in there to deal with that, and I hate to use the word, but I think you're going to ultimately have to exempt attorneys from this process simply because to not do that is going to cause us to have fiduciary issue, and we're obviously going to step on the side of the law in our bar obligations, and we're going to be in litigation, and I think you guys will lose. And I don't want to do that. I don't think anybody else here does. I think we all go to court, and we all announce who we represent. But I think when you get into the issues of how much somebody's paying, what the deal is, et cetera, et cetera, then you're going into that attorney-client issue, and I think that is problematic. So, I'd urge you to take a look at that part of it. The second thing I would ask you to take a look at is the enforcement provisions. Again, the problem is that there aren't any enforcement provisions, and the ones that do exist are relatively weak. And unless you give an independent third party, be it the city attorney, or a special committee, or an outside independent council, the opportunity to prosecute violators, all you're going to have is a continuing system of people violating, saying, "Oh, my gosh, I made a mistake," fixing it, and going on. So, there needs to be some sort of an enforcement provision. But again, I commend the council for taking the first steps and really appreciate the hard work you guys are doing.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right. Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Mr. Avery, do we have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. I move the balance of the consent calendar items, one through 15, with the exception of, or at least registering a no vote, Councilmember Muldoon on item eight, and Councilmember Duffield also on item eight. There are also two amendments to last, the last council meeting's minutes of January 14th, and these are items one and three.
Sorry, just a moment. We have amendments to item number three? Oh, the ordinance. Got it, okay. Thank you. Sorry, I misunderstood that. Do we have a second? All right, second by Councilmember Muldoon. Let's vote.
My screen doesn't work again.
Just... Are you voting yes?
I went to sleep. And prior to... Yeah, just go ahead and tap it. And prior to reading the votes, sorry, I have a lot of ordinances to read. Let me get you guys started. Ordinance number 2020-3, or two, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach amending Chapter 14.12 of Title 14 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code relating to water service discontinuation for non-payment. Ordinance number 2020-3. There you go. Let's see. Ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach amending Section 1.12.020 subsection J and adding Chapter 1.28 to Title 1 of Newport Beach Municipal Code to increase transparency in government operations and establish lobbyist registration reporting disclosure requirements. Ordinance number 2020-1, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach amending sections, chapter... amending sections of Chapter 12.24 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code regarding increasing and decreasing state speed limits. Councilmember Brenner, are you a thumbs up? I will assist you in a moment. Are you thumbs up? Okay. Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Technology. All right, so we'll move on to public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items? Hang on, we need to get livestreamed here. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Dennis Bress, Balbo Island. Couple of things. One, was at the Aviation Committee meeting run by Councilmember Jeff Herdman last night, doing a great job. We're really making progress, especially the way Jeff has broken things down into subcommittees, and the subcommittees are broken out to do very specific things, and they're doing wonderful work. One thing I want to make the request for is we're over in the next building. If we could turn on the streaming, in order to stream live that work that's being done there, and then record it so that we could put it on the city's website. Not a lot of people can make all the meetings, but this airport work is very important. So, I think it would help with our new person, that's our public information manager, John Pope, kind of fall within his wheelhouse to be able to have more input going out to the citizens to see what's going on. So, if we could turn on the streaming and record it and post it on the website for Aviation Committee meetings. Second point is, I would make the request to the City Council to request to officially from the City of Newport Beach to the Board of Supervisors. You've heard this before for a feasibility study. This kind of ties into transportation in order to figure out how we might interconnect John Wayne Airport to Anaheim-Artic Transportation Center, and then from Anaheim-Artic out to Ontario, with the point to be able to have an option now, knowing that John Wayne Airport and the growth of John Wayne based on just population is going to increase. We had about 10.6 million passengers go through John Wayne in 2019. So, other point is, we're doing the OC Streetcar, which is a four-mile project above ground in Santa Ana, and that's $408 million for four miles. So, it's 100 million a mile. The City of Santa Ana and the mayor of Santa Ana is basically moving as a city to want to expand upon that system. They want to connect from the terminus on Harbor Boulevard in Costa Mesa, 11 miles up to Disneyland, and on Bristol, six miles down to John Wayne. And I think this kind of follows into the RENA plan, too, that we could do some high-density numbers. The millennials, young people that are working, don't necessarily want to have single-family homes, but in LA, they're doing tremendous work on this communal living-type configuration, where you live in a building and you have your own room. They have communal kitchen, they have a gym, all the amenities, and they're not lonely. Everybody's together having a good time. So, maybe that's something that if we connected RENA and our ability to meet those numbers in and around the airport, these people don't necessarily want cars either at younger age, so they could connect to this mass transit terminus that could get them up to Anaheim, and then from Anaheim up to Ontario. So, those are the two things, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening, honorable council members. My name is Ryan Reza Farsai. First off, my condolences to the Bryant, Altabelli, Mauser, Chester, Zobayan families and extended families. My heart goes out especially to the three children that were on board of that helicopter, Gianna, Alyssa, and Peyton. It was a tragic event on Sunday morning in the city of Los Angeles. Newport Beach and Philadelphia lost one of its greatest. I am a 20-year season ticket holder for the Lakers, and I'm thankful for the NBA and the Clippers organization for postponing tonight's game at the request of the Lakers organization and the Bus Family. I'm here tonight because I do not need to be at a Los Angeles Staples Center for a 7:37 PM tipoff. I'm not Muslim, I'm not Jewish, I'm not Christian, I'm not Catholic, I'm not Buddhist, I'm not Hindu. What I am is all of them. That is my self-realization for the last few several years. I'm not 45 years old, and three years of doing daily yoga, and 20 years as a practitioner, and 18 years as a teacher of yoga and eastern philosophy. And we always say in eastern philosophy, you're not in charge. The bookie of souls is in charge. The un-bribable judge. He's in charge. He's in charge of your first, middle, and last breath, first, middle, and last heartbeat. So, you should learn to be thankful for your life and do the best you can. Tonight, I'm here to talk about life and what it is, the meaning of life, as perceived by this Trojan yogi father, the lineage of kings and prophets and gurus and the follower of Lord Christ. The meaning of life is to make the world a better place for our children and our children's children. Even if you do not have any children, this must be your focus. How do we do that? First, we've got to take care of ourselves. According to one Deepak Chopra, you need five things to have a good life. You need to eat well, you need to sleep well, you need to have regular exercise, you should have regular massage, and a regular chiropractor. I would say if you did daily yoga, you don't need regular chiropractic, and your health will steadily improve, and your knees will last beyond your 80s, 90s, or 100s. Your mind, body, soul, and spirit, and your heart will be under your control. There are two types of people in this world, those that are in control of their body and their health, and those that are at the mercy of their body and their health. The number-one lesson you can give your children is to steadily improve their health and their lifetime. Without good health, you're no good to yourself, your family, or your friends, or society as a whole. Bettering the world is working for our children by proper conduct, proper speech, proper behavior, proper thoughts. Your children watch and learn from your actions and your words, so make sure you say good words to them. Always give them positive feedback. Do not put them down, do not discourage them for whatever they want to do, and let them do what they want to do in life. Do not be an obstacle for their goals and their dreams. So, those are my two cents for you guys, and thankful again for the Bus Family to step up and do something that has never been done before, to postpone a game. And thank you, and God bless America.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, on non-agenda items. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move into the public hearing on item number 16. Unless someone would like a full staff report, I think we could focus in on a couple of things. The one I would suggest is talking about the difference between 500 and 750 square feet, and the other would be to address some of the questions that Mr. Tanner had sent in that I thought might be worth discussing just a bit. Anyone want more than that? Okay, thanks. Let's start with that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Simone Jurges, the Community Development Director. With me, I have Jaime Mario. He's a principal planner that's worked on this project. You know, we've... The City Council initiated the cottage preservation ordinance back in May, and we've been spending a lot of time working with the community to try to get this preservation ordinance correct. The... This preservation ordinance is... It's a volunteer ordinance. Property owners don't have to comply with this preservation ordinance. It is created simply to allow families or property owners to expand their property up to 500 square feet without complying with the parking requirements, and it is strictly voluntary. That's why we did it. The whole purpose is to preserve those beach cottages. If a property owner wants, decides to take that beach cottage and tear it down, that's up to them, and they have every right as a property owner, as a property right, to rebuild that structure. Again, this is a voluntary program. We want to talk about the... How we came up with the 500 square feet. Originally, when we went to the Planning Commission, we had actually a provision of up to 50% of the existing structure. The feedback we got was that potentially you could have dwellings to be very large. If somebody wanted to take advantage of that 50% rule, if you had an existing cottage, which was, say, 2,000 square feet, and you expand it 50%, you can have a cottage up to 3,000 square feet, and that was going to create a large structure. So, we got some negative feedback from the community. The Planning Commission came to us... When we presented to the Planning Commission, they said that we need a little bit more certain caps on the limits and sizes of these dwelling units as far as regard with our ordinance. The 500 square feet that we've come up with and proposed to the Planning Commission, it was done at an internal staff level. And what we've just decided upon is what is a reasonable amount to expand a beach cottage, where you could expand maybe up to two bedrooms and a little bit of square footage. You know, a bedroom's typically 150 square feet, maybe up to 200 square feet. So, that's how we came up with the 500 square feet. There are some members of the community that went to the Planning Commission and said, you know, "We love this ordinance, but we'd like to push it up from 500 up to 750 square feet." The Planning Commission didn't direct staff to change our resolution. They didn't change anything. They just said, "Go ahead and just share that with the City Council and see what the City Council wants to do with it." From a staff standpoint, we came up with 500. We thought it was a reasonable number because we had some comments from the community about the size getting too big. If the council decides to push it up to 750 square feet, there's no negative impacts of doing that at all. So, that's kind of how we came up with the 500 square feet. Jaime's here. He can answer any additional questions that you may have. And with regards to AB... If we could put it up on the screen...
I'll tell you what, just a second. Let's just stop on that discreet item. Council, do you have any questions on... No. Okay. All right. Let's go to the next one.
And there's been a question about how does the ADU provision come into play, and I'm going to have Jaime go ahead and answer that. We have a slide up on the screen. We have a provision of the state law, AB 881.
Thank you, Simone. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, so, the question was posed, will this cottage preservation ordinance possibly lead to the ability to be converted into accessory dwelling units? And as you heard at the meeting, the last meeting, the state has removed a lot of the barriers and restrictions that cities can place on property owners to develop accessory dwelling units. We don't think that this cottage preservation ordinance will open up the door to more accessory dwelling units. Compliance, or in order for a property owner to take advantage of this incentive, they're going to have to agree to restrict their property to a certain building form and building envelope, preserving the character of that property, and they're subject to that 500-square-foot cap. However, the accessory dwelling unit law would allow property owners to kind of go beyond what we're proposing through this incentive, and there's the ability for a property owner to actually develop up to 1,000-square-foot accessory dwelling without providing any additional parking. So, the law is actually more permissive as pertains to accessory dwelling units than what the cottage preservation ordinance would allow.
You know, I realized we should probably also just... Let me ask, council, do you have any questions specific to this second item? Okay. A third item the Planning Commission asked us to ask staff to bring to us was a question of requiring an in-lu parking fee. Do you have any questions on that? All right, seeing none. Any other questions for staff on this item? Okay, we'll go out to public comment. Do we have public comments on this item?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Charles Klob. First of all, I want to thank Simone and Jaime for pushing this along for the time it's taken. I've been to every public outreach meeting, every Planning Commission meeting regarding this. Completely support it, and I agree with increasing the square footage to 750. I think this is a great incentive to get people in cottages to remodel instead of scraping. So, I completely support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any... All right.
Council, Mayor, Dennis Bress, Balbo Island. I concur with the 750. I'm just getting up to speed on this, but had a conversation in regards to the Balbo Island Preservation Association on Balbo Island, and this is a good deal. Basically, what it's going to do is allow people that own cottages to have an option to expand, and if we go up to the 750, I think that's going to make a big difference for people taking that direction, because that could give them almost, based on 200 square feet, close to over three bedrooms at that particular point. So, I'm all in favor of this, and I hope we can expand it to 750. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other... Okay.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. First of all, as I understand it, this has something to do with expanding non-conforming cottages. cottages, and we just heard about the accessory dwelling units. Is the staff telling us now that the ever-changing state rules about ADUs allow them to be added to non-conforming structures if one of these cottages is non-conforming? Second point is the reason we had the restrictions in the past that you're relaxing had to do with the concern about parking. I'm not sure the concern totally goes away, so I would suggest to you, as I did to the planning commission, I believe, if you're wanting to go to allowing the larger increase, you might want that to be contingent on providing some parking of some kind if you're going to go to the seven hundred and fifty square feet. And then finally, I suggest some changes to the text of the ordinance. You are tonight introducing an ordinance. You want to get it right on the first reading, and looking at page sixteen dash fifteen, at the top is saying that the ordinance applies to a residential dwelling duplex or triplex. I believe it was agreed at the planning commission that that was intended to say a single-family residential dwelling duplex or triplex. The way it's worded now, it would seem to apply to any residential dwelling, so I think you need to make, of the many changes I suggested, at least that change needs to be made. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? All right, let's bring it back. So let's go with the language question first and then the ADU question second. Mr. Harp.
We took a look at it today. We think it actually clarifies by saying single-unit residential dwelling. I think it probably reads a little bit better as opposed to just saying residential dwelling. So we'd recommend that change everywhere that appears.
Okay.
In the text of the ordinance.
Understood. All right, and then the, to the, so the, so the recommendation then is on page sixteen dash fifteen, there's an exception for cottage preservation. The final sentence says, "Are permitted for a residential dwelling duplex or triplex that comply with the following criteria," and the recommended change is, "Are permitted for a single unit, single fa, single family?"
Single family.
Single family. Yeah, thank you. That didn't sound right. Got it, single family.
I think the language you actually used in the zoning is single unit.
Single unit.
Single unit. So we would, if someone were to make a motion, we would be incorporating the phrase "single unit" in front of the word dwelling where that appears.
And there's a couple other little typos that Jim brought to our attention. The wrong resolutions referenced in the resolution, and I think it says authoring, authoring instead of authorizing at one point.
Okay, so we'll need to make those modifications as well. Okay, and then to the question about adding ADUs to non-conforming, what's the, what's the thought on that one?
Yeah, so it is a possibility. The law makes it very easy for someone to convert existing space within an existing building, whether it's conforming or non-conforming.
And that would be true whether we pass this or not.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any discussion up here? Mr. Muldoon.
Yeah, if they're going to convert it, like, like to look nicer, right, and have it be cottage-style than a cement block. Could you just go back to the language and could you put it up on the screen? Because Councilmember Dixon and I were just discussing that. I want to be sure, the distinction you mentioned about single unit.
Well, we'd need to pull up, we need to get, do we have a copy of, does someone have a copy of the language? We can just.
We actually have this on the screen right now? Is that, is that the appropriate one?
Perfect, yep, that was it. Okay, and just walk, just so that we fully understand, walk us through it.
So this is an exception to another provision in the non-conforming chapter that limits additions to non-conforming structures that are non-conforming due to parking to a ten percent addition. So this is, this is going to be an exception to that other provision, which would allow additions up to fifty percent of the existing floor of that structure, but no greater than five hundred square feet, which is the cap we discussed. And then the clarification is to add single-unit residential dwelling, and then it goes on to say duplex, triplex. And then there's another clarification we'd like to make. It says when they comply with the following criteria, and then the criteria is in the ordinance, and that sets forth the building envelope that they'll need to comply with.
Okay, that's what I was confused. You're putting single unit just to be specific, off for clarity.
Just for clarity, just to confirm that it's not a residential unit within a larger project.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms., I'm sorry, did you want to speak? No, okay. All right, well, if I recall correctly, this, this came from Councilmember Heardman. Would you like to make the motion?
I will move to approve with the amended language referencing single-unit residential dwelling.
Do we have a second?
And is that, does that include to increase from five hundred to seven fifty?
Oh, that's a, that's, no. All right. Do we have a second? All right, second from Councilmember Brenner. Do we have any discussion on this? Mr. Muldoon.
Yes, I'd like to offer a substitute motion to amend this to be up to seven hundred and fifty. Really, I think we're on the same page, Jeb, it's just to encourage people to keep the cottage, even though they're losing square footage.
That's fine with me.
Okay, hang on just a moment. What we'll do then instead is, is it okay if that's offered as a friendly amendment then? And do you accept that? Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any discussion?
And just briefly, your motion includes the other two changes I referenced as well.
Correct.
Yes, it does. Okay. Any discussion on this? All right, let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number two, twenty-twenty-four, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach adopting code amendment number CA two thousand nineteen dash zero-zero-six to amend Title Fifteen, entitled Building and Construction, and Title Twenty, entitled Planning and Zoning of the Newport Beach Municipal Code related to cottage preservation. The motion carries unanimously, seven-zero.
All right. We will move into current business, item number seventeen. Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I recuse myself, I don't want to go out of here without, I completely forgot to thank our staff, Dave Webb and Chris Miller, for all their great work on this dredging project that I take credit for, which I should not because they do all the hard work. But on this item, I'm going to have to recuse myself for business interests. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll just wait a moment. All right, before we jump to staff, we'll, actually, I'd like to invite Skip Kenny to come up and speak first, and also, well, you'll probably get thanked a lot, but I just want to say, especially to the subcommittee from the Harbor Commission that worked this through, thank you. The amount of effort in public, the amount of effort that went into this, in addition to all of the time that you spent in public meetings, is Herculean, so I just want to say, before you even start, thank you. So anyway, Mr. Kenny, go ahead.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor O'Neill, Mayor O'Neill and members of the city council. I am joined tonight by Harbor Commission Chairman Paul Blank and Commissioner Don Yon. I'd like for them to come up and join me if they would. We are the three harbor commissioners that were the ad hoc committee tasked with reviewing Title Seventeen of the City of Newport Beach Municipal Code, providing the Harbor Commission with the committee's recommendation, recommended modifications and updates, taking into account the current users and usage of the harbor, and the responsibilities of the newly-formed Harbor Department, and presenting those modifications and updates approved by the Harbor Commission to you this evening for your review. We do apologize for the length of time that it took us to bring this to you. We did have to review a hundred-plus pages of city municipal code. In all, there were approximately twenty-five meetings, six of which were public stakeholders' meeting, and two of those were in front of the entire Harbor Commission. There were numerous reviews of drafts of the entire code, input received from the public on a portion of the city's website that was created specifically for comments to Title Seventeen, significant email and conference call exchanges necessary to get us to this point, and in many cases, a change to one part of the code necessitated changes to many other parts of the code. And so we're pleased to present to you this evening the Harbor Commission's recommended modifications and updates to Title Seventeen of the City of Newport Beach Municipal Code, exclusive of Section seventeen-ten, which deals with marine activities permits, and we hope to be back to you very shortly with our recommendations on that section. Staff in their report to you will discuss the key modifications and updates to the code that the Harbor Commission is proposing this evening. But before I turn it over to them, I would like to thank Assistant City Manager Carol Jacobs, Harbor Master Kurt Borstein, and Assistant City Attorney Yolanda Summerhill for all of their support that they provided to us and for their dedication to our collective goal of getting Title Seventeen right. In my opinion, we're fortunate to have such knowledgeable and dedicated individuals to work with, and we would like to thank them for all of their efforts and for their patience in dealing with this complex task. Kurt?
Thank you very much, Commissioner, and Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm going to present a summary of the work that the commissioners led us through. As you all are aware, in two thousand and eighteen, this ad hoc committee was formed, and their goal was to do a cover-to-cover review of all of these code sections. As Commissioner Kenny mentioned, public participation was paramount in this effort. Six meetings were held between April and August of nineteen, in-depth in nature. They were, the website that was created was already mentioned, and beyond just promoting the dates, it allowed people to view redline drafts, submit online written comments if they were unable to attend in person, and those materials, this photo represents the type of public participation we saw, groups ranging from thirty to fifty people at these various public meetings. So we had a good level of stakeholder buy-in. This slide is indicated, is intended to try to demonstrate how, this was a lot of content to take on, and so the strategy that the commission took was to break it into three review blocks. The first public meeting would collect feedback, written comment from those that were unable to attend would be incorporated into drafts, and then a second draft would then go back to the public for additional review and revision. And that happened over and over again with the three various blocks. Then on to the ad hoc committee a second time, the Harbor Commission, the folks with the city attorney's office, and that brings us to the work we're doing tonight. This slide represents the three blocks and the various sections of the code that were covered in each of those blocks. And some of the key topics that were focuses of the Title Seventeen review included clarifying public hearing processes, improving rules associated with popular public dock use, looking at the live-aboard boater experience, commercial marina requirements, allowable overnight stays for non-live-aboard boaters, and harbor water quality. I'm not reading each of the bullet points, but just touching on some of them here. And harbor water quality issues was very, very central to this review. In the various provisions, updates to the duties of various staff are recommended in seventeen-point-zero-five, including a review of public hearing requirements. In the case of seventeen-twenty-five, recommendations to provide my office some additional tools in the event sea lions board people's boats if we can't reach the boat owner. This way, our team can act more quickly and hopefully protect property and the quiet enjoyment of neighboring residents. Sea, the sea lions bark real loud at night. In the, in the case of harbor development, proposed updates for public notice requirements so that neighbors know when planned developments are planned, and clarifications on abutting properties when encroachment is in play. And in terms of the live-aboard community, one recommendation coming from the commission is to set commercial marinas at seven percent of their slips for live-abords. This was intended as a clarification in that the prior version of seventeen could have been interpreted that no live-abords would have been permitted in those, in those settings. We also view living in the harbor, not only is it a benefit to the community as a, as a neighborhood watch-style model, but it's also a really neat way to have a lifestyle, and so you have to be a community member in good standing. You can't, you have to have your bills paid and the mooring equipment serviced and not have a history of incidents. The emphasis on water quality is shown here where the live-aboard community currently have what I would consider a, a, what's the word for it, an honor system in terms of reporting their servicing of the head or the restroom facilities. And the commission felt strongly that moving to a more accountable system by either use of a commercial pump-out service or another accountable system that could be worked out with my office was important. Periodically being able to do di-tab testing to, again, make sure those heads are safe and not spilling pollutants into the harbor. In the case of overnight stays for non-live-aboard boaters, those are just our recreational boaters in the, in the fields, there was a lot of discussion about what the, what the magic number would be, and some, there was some consideration of making it more overnight stays in a month than is currently the case. There were other members of stakeholder groups that frankly thought it should be eliminated altogether, and following a lot of healthy discussion, the commission's recommendation was that there should be no change, that the three nights a month standard that's currently in the code should remain. Guest boaters that are using the harbor on a short-term stay will, can, are, the recommendation is that they continue to be granted up to fifteen nights in a twelve-month period for overnight stays, but that recommendation would also allow some latitude for my office in those cases if we were to have, you know, some, some visitor who needs eighteen or nineteen days, we could consider that on a case-by-case basis to some little, limited In the case of seventeen-sixty, I'm going to restate water quality over and over again, but this would also allow additional tools to let the city conduct di-tab testing on vessels within the mooring fields, similar to a model that is in place currently in Avalon. It clarifies the rules associated with loaning of moorings and establishes a methodology for those folks that I'll say have their dream boat in mind, but maybe their current mooring doesn't allow for the size of the boat, and they come and request an extension. To speak to that just a little bit in greater details, the, the map that's shown here on this slide represents the various mooring fields in Newport Harbor, and these are defined fields, and so when someone asks for a larger space to store their boat, it can have an impact on neighboring vessels and could potentially congest those fields for people that need to navigate the, their way, their way to their mooring. So this will be coming back in a policy forum in later, in greater detail in February, but the principle behind this is to allow a more easy-to-understand system for folks that make these requests and allow the harbor master to consider such requests up to five feet, provided that they meet the criteria established and approved. Those requests beyond five feet would need to go to the full Harbor Commission for their consideration. And the recommendations that are being put forward also guard against, it's really intended for that, that dream boat that I was discussing. It's not intended as a speculative device for somebody that may perceive the, the mooring having greater value at a, at a, at a greater size, and so there's some provisions to guard against that potential. Water quality, water quality, water quality. The proposal allows for city to, the city to, to place a di-tab in a, in a vessel that's visiting the harbor for a short time, and we would visit that vessel and ask to go aboard, and of course, if the owner of the vessel says no, they have their property rights and their fourth, their Fourth Amendment rights, but they, they would be asked to leave the harbor because they, you.
Just a, sorry, just a moment. Mr. Muldoon.
Something, something somewhat comical and something serious.
Yes.
My favorite movie is, one of them is called Tombstone. It's about Wyatt Earp and the Cowboys, and the Cowboys deputize themselves, they, they give themselves stars. You'll notice our harbor commissioners have star lapels, looks like they're the law on the water, and so right now, it's the Wyatt Earp and Doc Holliday versus the Cowboys. But thanks for all your hard work on this, and I wanted just people to know that if they see some of the star, thank them for all the hard work they've done on the harbor. When someone, in the, in the case of Avalon, when a di-tab request is submitted, someone goes aboard and places it in, is there an argument that it's a consent in order to use the mooring, or how do they justify going on board in consideration of Fourth Amendment?
Well, we would request, as they do on the island, we would request permission to board the boat, to deposit the di-tab, and inspect the sanitation systems. If the vessel owner denies that request, we would respect that request, but we would also advise them that that's a requirement to rent the mooring, and so we would wish them well as they sail on.
And that's because... And that's because, you say, get out of the OK Corral, right? But, no, that's a Tombstone joke. But that's because it's public use of publicly controlled land, and you have the right to revoke their ability to use it if they don't comply with a request.
That's correct.
As opposed to someone having real property and their effects or their home.
That's correct.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as we, and lastly, the Commission has made recommendations for the processes of appeals in the event one of the staff decisions was to, you know, if the party thinks we got it wrong, that they have a due process established through the code. The same is the case in the event an act of the Commission is viewed as having gotten it wrong. And it clarifies that those appeals should go to the Harbor Commission or the City Council respectively. Thank you for your time this evening.
Go ahead, Mr. Kenny.
We are here, the three of us, just to respond to any questions or comments that you may have. This is much too much for one person to know it all, and we all have a lot of time and effort into this, and what one forgets, the other one hopefully will remember. So we're just here to answer questions. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Avery.
Thank you, and congratulations for a great job and seeing something to its completion. And this is a huge moment for the harbor, where this is really where the city takes back the harbor, and we finally can exert some authority, our Harbor Department, which it didn't really have before, to protect the waterways and make the harbor safe and fun for everyone. So, and it was a hell of a lot of work, and I appreciate it from all three of you. I know the whole entire Council does, so it's great because none of it was, none of it was easy. I have just a question about, I tend to think that we could allow more live-aborders in marinas. And I also understand that most marinas in Newport Beach don't allow it. Of course, that's their prerogative. So the Bay Club doesn't allow it. I don't believe, the Irvine Company doesn't allow it. And that takes out some of the big dogs. And I'm not sure about the rest. But there's some smaller marinas, and my experience, I mean, being at least temporarily in marinas with live-aborders, live-aborders are, as was mentioned, they are like neighbors in the sense that they watch out for their neighborhood. And so there's an awful lot of time when marinas aren't policed or the harbor staff is not there at night. Usually, they run with a pretty lean staff. So you always, and I'm sure Harbor Master Kurt knows, that you go out in the mooring fields and you talk to the people that are living aboard their boats, they know what's going on. And they may not always give you the straight scoop, but if you go to two or three of them, you'll get a sense of it right off the bat. And so I think they can also bring the same to a small marina run by maybe an independent operator that doesn't have a lot of resources. So I'm just curious about the 7%, and would there be, is it, how did that come about? And then could we think, would it be detrimental to increase that, to allow them to have more than maybe one boat or no boats, depending on the size of their marina?
Yeah, Councilmember Avery let us address that, and I think all three of us might want to have, you know, a shot at that. When we looked at Title 17, it did not address commercial marinas.
Right.
And there were two schools of thought. I think you could interpret that to mean that live-abords were prohibited. I also think you could interpret that to mean that there was no limit. I think the potential risk of having a commercial marina occupied solely by families living in their boats could exacerbate traffic, city services, and certainly water quality. And so we felt that we needed to put a limit on commercial marinas. However, there was no trigonometric function to come up with the 7%. We used 7% merely because that was the number that was limited on the offshore moorings. And so we felt that was, that was probably the right number. But I think we're all open, and I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues. If the Council believes that that number should be higher or lower, so be it.
I would just say that the 7% number was selected because that is the traditional number for moorings, so we selected that number for commercial marinas. The number in LA, excuse me, the number in the city of LA is 10% in both situations. And I believe we referenced and grilled Kurt carefully on his experience, his prior experience, and that was the number that he brought. So 10% was the number in your previous marina. Is that correct?
City of Long Beach, they actually had a lower number. It was 5% live-aboard, but it's a very large series of marina, 3,200 slips between the two marinas, and they have a large population still.
Great.
Just going back to the, we're using that same formula for the offshores. The, each of the marina operators will be more centralized owners, operating, you know, groups of these facilities versus single operators that are leased on the mooring fields. So we believe that having that percentage is, just as we had described earlier, is somewhat consistent. And since there are many marina operators, since like Irvine Company and such, that have zero live-abords, we felt that having at least seven stated in the code instead of being, remaining unstated would be consistent with the other rules.
So a small marina, there's a couple of small marinas in town with maybe 25, 30 slips. So it's 7%. I'm a journalism major. How many slips would there be? Three. Thank you. And that, I'm just wondering if that would be detrimental to have, say, five out of those slips? And so I think probably the only real issue is, yeah, would they be impacting water quality? And I suppose you could go to something like, we're assuming that they're playing by the rules in terms of the holding tanks and all that, but there's probably a gray water issue what goes down the sink. And then that's an education thing in terms of types of soap to use and, you know, watching what goes down your sink and that kind of thing.
Question for staff. I believe we addressed it, but I would want to make sure that the live-aboard and the commercial marina would also need a live-aboard permit.
Of course.
Yeah, and that then helps us control the use of that vessel as a domicile.
Right. Right. Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Brenner.
I would just like to say thank you. The amount of work that has obviously gone into this is extraordinary, and I especially appreciate the fact that you also reached out to the community. But you addressed the weeds, the nuts and bolts issues that we at this level would really never have been able to handle because this is your area, it's your expertise, and I just value that so much. And for that reason, I'd really like to, I will support this as-is because I would rather not adjust it here unless we have a really compelling reason to do so. And one of the points I would like to make about this is that I think tonight is a prime example of why I have been advocating for a commission that addresses traffic in our city. We spent, what, two hours in our study session on the weeds and nuts and bolts of the Newport Heights traffic issue, and it has been to this Council numerous times. We've had no board or commission like this with really qualified people who are not political. They can vote their conscience, and they, and they obviously care about what they're doing. And so when they bring something to us, we don't have to go through that tedious, the tedious effect of having to look at every single proposal that staff has brought to us. So I think it's just remarkable, the contrast that we see tonight between this and what we deal with continuously, over and over and over again, when it comes to traffic. I wish that every major issue that we had in the city was handled by a commission that was going to look at it with as much diligence as these people have done. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you. We're all going to be pronouncing our gratitude and appreciation for the hard work of the Harbor Commission. So I will echo Councilmember Brenner's and, well, everyone's comments because it is stupendous what you have really done. I do want to address the commercial marina on this one area. I don't, we can further discuss whether we deal with it tonight or, since the MAPs are going back to the Harbor Commission, maybe it could be folded into that. But having just, as I mentioned earlier, having spent a day and a half in Sacramento, a large part of the discussion related to housing, I want to be sure we're not foreclosing the city's opportunities to look at, potentially look at live-abords as a form of affordable housing or any form of housing, since we have to find ways to get to that 4,800 number. So I would ask if we could consider a recommend, and when the Harbor Commission is discussing the marine activities permit matter, part of, section of the code, that they look at the commercial marina aspect to, to make sure that we get the right number, not just because mooring, there are different, moorings and commercial mariners, they're apples and oranges, that we look at it with a sense of what's practical. Do we want to encourage and not discourage live-abords for that purpose? So that would be if we are making a motion at some point to adopt the recommendation of staff, I would also want to refer to the Harbor Commission these two additional updates. That's the marine activity permit work, which is going to be ongoing, and to look at the commercial marinas as a potential yes or no as to whether they are incorporated in our housing requirements. It could be. I mean, that's a potential opportunity. Thank you.
Yeah. That may end up needing to be a letter from us to HCDL, so.
Might be what?
It might, it might need to be a letter from us asking the question to HCDL, so. Yeah. Anyway, all right. Mr. Avery. I'm, you know what, actually, I'm sorry, I'm going to make sure that Councilmembers get a first, first chance. Mr. Heardman first. Welcome back.
Bill, Don, and Paul, I know each of you personally. I greatly respect each of you, your work ethic, your expertise, your integrity, and the entire year you put in on this project. I have absolutely no problem at all supporting your recommendations and want to thank you.
All right. Mr. Avery.
Yeah, I would support Councilmember Dixon's proposal to, to have the Harbor Commission take another look at it and bring it back with the map in a few months. And I'd just like to say that, given that, because the largest blocks of slips prohibit living aboard, there aren't many opportunities as harbor to do so in a marina where there's heads and showers and facilities. Because it is a certain lifestyle, if you love boats, and there's a lot of people that prefer to live on a boat than in a house, I think we should give them that opportunity and let the, I mean, I think ideally, you let the marina sort of figure out what their, what amount they would like to have as live-aborders. And obviously, we, maybe we put a cap on it, but certainly more than, I think, what the 7% is. But I would leave that up to, maybe the Harbor, there's, it's so, the number of small marinas is so small, it'd just be interesting to conduct, and maybe you've already done it, just a survey of the setup. Does it have the facilities to handle live-aborders, the heads and showers? Not that they need, they've got self-contained on their boats, but a lot of times, they'd like to use those shoreside amenities. And then just see what it would mean, because I think you'd come up with a number pretty quick of the max number, something that's sort of reasonable and work with each business owner that has a marina to do that. And I think it would add a little bit more to the fabric of the marina and the, I think, the oversight of the marina. I think those marine operators would choose their tenants carefully. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, if I, if I can, Harbor Master Borstein did conduct a fairly simple survey of most of the marinas, and so we have that data. And, you know, at the pleasure of the Council, we certainly could take a look at the percentage when we finalize our work on the marine activities permits. We do plan on having another public hearing on that particular issue. And so, you know, again, at the pleasure of the Council, we could certainly wrap that percentage issue into that public hearing also.
Okay. Ms. Brenner.
Mr. Mayor, did you say that you talked to city staff about our arena numbers as it would pertain to live-abords and got some clarification if we move forward on that?
No, no, sorry. What I was, what I was saying was, in order for us to find out whether live-abords would count, we would need to send in a request into HCD to find out, similar to what we're going to need to do with ADUs. And I would just caution that if the answer comes back yes, it may end up triggering an SB 330 issue on live-abords. So that will end up being a dual, double-edged sword. So, but I just want to point that out, that as we, as we're trying to determine whether live-abords could count, we would just need to send in a clarification request, and we will have lots of those. So that's, that's the thought.
We don't want to do anything that would impact any of that.
That's, yeah, that is, that is, that is essentially correct, yes. So before we go out to public comment, just to clarify real quickly, Mr. Avery was saying that he agreed with Ms. Dixon, and your point, if I understood it correctly, was you're fine with as-is, but you'd like the Harbor Commission to take another look at the percentage issue along with the map discussion?
Yes, but as you're saying that, I'm thinking, is it possible just to pull that out so it doesn't go into effect? Or is it in effect or with this qualification that we recommend that the Harbor Commission review it before they set that limit?
Well, let's, so let's go to, that's a good question for Mr. Harp. So, Mr. Harp, the question, I suppose, is can we pull out the 7% issue? Or I guess maybe that's a question for Ms. Summerhill.
As it applies to the commercial marinas?
Like they said, there's no standard currently as far as allowing it, and there are people living in the commercial marinas. So my recommendation is we leave it at 7%, let them go back and take another look at, see if they got the right number. But there is a situation existing today that probably needs to be taken care of and is not easily taken out because there's so many revisions to the chapter on live-abords. Our recommendation would be go ahead and go forward with it and then have taken another look at it and maybe modify it.
All right. There are not that many. It's just too related, because it was, it looks like, to me, it looked like commercial marinas were just tacked on into the, largely related to moorings, and then they added in the commercial marinas.
So you're talking about just pulling out that one little piece of, and what would you propose, you would just leave it blank?
Just leave it silent, just as the current code is. And then, but we, in our, in our actions tonight, direct the Harbor Commission to come back with a recommendation.
I think you could do, I think you could do that if you're just going to eliminate basically the one sentence that authorized it and leave it blank.
Yeah. That's what I would recommend.
What would be the effect of doing that?
Well, it creates an odd situation because you do have people that are living in the marinas, and so it's somewhat been implied that that was permissible. So it would be just an issue that's not addressed, that's silent on it.
Which it has been for decades, correct?
Mayor O'Neill, we have, I have a copy of our kind of informal survey that we do with marinas. At 7%, we have, we have three live-abords that we surveyed in Newport Harbor Marina. Everyone else has zero or one. So even if you put the 7% in, there's, I can't believe we're impacting anybody. So we can do it either, we can do it at the Council's pleasure either way, but there are, we do not believe that there are so many that we would be telling somebody that they had to kick out their live-abords.
May I just make a comment?
Oh, yeah, of course.
But I could say it the other way as well. I mean, there's so few, why even putting a limit on it?
Yeah. Honorable Councilmember Dixon, if I can address that, our concern was that we could end up with marinas full of live-abords if there is no limit, and that could have a very significant effect on traffic and city services and certainly on potential environmental effects with the water quality.
Well, I respect that and appreciate that. You gentlemen are the experts. It just surprises me, and when Newport Beach is being accused of not having enough affordable housing, we have opportunities to be living on your boat, and nobody's taking advantage of that, and so there are only a handful of live-abords. I just wonder if we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist. I'm happy to refer it back to the Harbor Commission so they can address this in consideration of these comments this evening. Just what is the real issue? If there's not a problem after decades of not regulating live-abords on If there's not a problem after decades of not regulating liveaboards on commercial marinas, what's driving this change? But if there is a need to, I certainly respect the Harbor Commission greatly, and would appreciate them coming back with additional thoughts to inform us on, please.
All right, Mr. Avery.
Yeah, I, I don't want to go any further on this, I would just like to make sure whatever is going on right now, that we, liveaboards are secure in where they are right now, whatever we do, and that Commission comes back with a recommendation.
Okay, Mr. Heardman.
Quick question, Bill, did, did the arena numbers and affordable housing enter, enter into your recommendation for this 7% at all?
No, sir, it did not.
That wasn't in your thinking, okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, we're gonna go out to public comment now, so, public comment on this item?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First of all, I would like to acknowledge that I, I believe this was a sincerely well-intentioned process, it was very thorough, the Commission did as best they could, but no process is perfect, and one of the problems at the public meetings was there was a tendency to focus on little details that the subcommittee had noticed with the code, and it was really difficult to try to move the conversation to a bigger picture view of how the Harbor Code might need to be revised, and the Harbor Code itself has some big picture structural issues to it, if you look at your agenda packet, page 12, you will see the table of contents of the Harbor Code, you'll see that there is a chapter on vessel launching and operation, there's a chapter on birthing, mooring, and storage, which all sound like harbor uses, and then that's followed by a harbor chapter called Harbor Use Regulations. This is not user-friendly when you have things that sound like they should belong on one chapter, and then you have another chapter that seems to include everything. Similarly, you'll see a chapter on marine activities permits, you'll see a chapter on harbor development permits, you'll see a chapter on dredging permits, and then that's followed by a chapter on harbor permits. So this is not a user-friendly code, one thinking that they want to permit is, I mean, the staff understands it presumably, the Harbor Commission maybe understands it, but the average person reading it wouldn't know where to look for a particular permit in here, it, it has those problems, and when I could mention where it says Harbor Use Regulations, even that is not comprehensive, it doesn't give you the regulations on swimming in the harbor, which are a totally different part of the code. As to the Harbor Code and the housing issue that you were asking, the council may be interested to know a prior version of the Harbor Code actually anticipated the possibility that Newport Harbor would develop a Sausalito-style houseboat area in the harbor, houseboat being different than a liveaboard, houseboat is actually designed as a home, it's connected to the city sewer system and utilities and so forth, that chapter disappeared somewhere in the 2008 comprehensive update. Late this afternoon, I submitted some comments that I sent to the city staff after the Harbor Commission reviewed this, so the subcommittee here, I don't think, has seen these, I partly gave it to you because it had a little narrative in it, and how the Harbor Code got so un-user-friendly as it currently is, and comments like I do on the details of it, and since you're just tonight introducing the ordinance, should anybody interested, you can look at those comments in the two weeks before you introduce the thing. As just an example, if I can go over just a second here, if you look at page 732 of your agenda packet, you'll see the provision, section 1705030 about what the code applies to, and you'll notice I made a comment about that, and after the Harbor Commission saw that, the staff tried to correct that, try reading that yourself and see if you understand what the Harbor Code applies to, it seems to bite itself in the tail and makes no sense at all to me now, but probably nobody reads that, thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and councilmembers, my name is Jim Parker, and I-
Need you a little closer to the mic, I, I need you a little closer to the mic, yep, thank you.
Okay, good evening, I'm, my name is Jim Parker, and I'm representing Port Calypso Marina, and I had some prepared comments, but after the, this recent discussions you have had, I'd just like to say that, first of all, I'd like to thank councilmembers Avery and Dixon for the comments that they have made, I think they're right on point, I, I support the idea of, of bringing the liveaboards matter for commercial marinas back to the Harbor Commission, so that we can, and, and so that they can take another look at it, and I was, I was out of the country during the previous meetings, and I will be there at any future meetings to, to give my, my input to it. At Port Calypso Marina, I've, I've had that, this experience with liveaboards since 1980, when I, when I took over the operation in 1980, there were one or two, I don't remember for sure how many, but there weren't more than two, I've had one or two during the intervening 40 years, at the, at this time, I'm, I'm really the only city marina in Newport Harbor that has liveab, that, that has liveaboards, and I have one, there's no proliferation issue here, there's, marinas are never going to be, going to 100%, the, the, the marina wouldn't, no, any marina, I would never want 100%, but, but what I have is a small number, and I like to keep a small number, to, because of the security, and because of the, you know, the, the extra eyes and, you know, on the marina, and on, on problems that might, might develop in the marina, so, and some of these, some of the marinas, we're talking about Harbor Marina and so on, so, so forth, or, in fact, most of the marinas on, on the, for the marinas, on the survey that was made on, in May by, by the Harbor Master, they're county marinas, and I don't believe they're even under, governed under Title 17, so, so you really take those out, you take those out of the mix, you take the county marinas out of the mix, and there's probably one marina, Port Calypso, that has, that has liveaboards, and I have one, so it's not a major issue, and I, and I, I realize that that it's hard to make total changes at this, at this late date, but if we can take it back, if we can maintain the status quo, and then take it back to the Harbor Commission for steady, bring, then bring it back to the council, I, I very much support that, and I think that's a great idea, thank you for your, your interest and time.
Thank you, next speaker, please. All right, seen none, we'll bring it back, so, to be consistent with, I'm not gonna make the motion, but I just want to make sure we're clear on what we need to do here, in order to be consistent with Councilmember Dixon's comments, how would the motion be phrased, Mr. Harp?
Part of the best way to do it is to move staff recommendation, except for section 1740110, to delete the second sentence, those are other references, or, in all references, I guess, to liveaboard permits at commercial marinas, I guess there's another reference in 174005OC and 1740030.
So it would be to omit code section references to what exactly?
To commercial, to liveaboard permits in commercial marinas.
Okay, all right, do we have a motion up here?
Make a motion to what the city attorney just said.
Seconded by Councilmember Avery, do we have any discussion? All right, seen none, let's vote. We're, we're gonna get the screen thing fixed.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2020-5, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, amending Title 17, the Harbor Code, and other related provisions of the Newport Beach Municipal Code, making comprehensive provisions, including but not limited to updating definitions, regulating marine sanitation devices to protect against discharge of waste in Newport Harbor, amending requirements for mooring subpermits, adding a procedure to allow mooring length extensions and modifying and/or adding procedures for issuance of permits, appeals, calls for review, and revocations. With Councilmember Duffy recusing himself, the motion carries 6-0.
All right, thank you, all right, we'll move to the next item, which is item number 18, yes.
I do have to recuse myself because of real property interests on this item.
Okay. All right, staff report was pretty comprehensive, do people feel the need, I, I've got some questions, but do people have, feel the need for a staff report on this?
I have a few questions.
Okay, short staff presentation then, please.
Real quick then, Micah Martin's here, our deputy director, he'll go through a brief, short presentation for you, background.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, just a quick presentation here on our Babo Island Wood Bench Maintenance Program, just a brief, quick overview here, there's the, the benches we're talking about, there's teakwood benches around the perimeter of the island, and then there's Jotoba benches, which are the two on the bottom there, which are exclusively on Marine Avenue, along with the trashcan in the center photo there, those are exclusive to Marine Avenue as well, and those are under a maintenance program. Just a real quick history here, just how we, how we got to this point, how these benches came about, the donation program introduced donation benches onto the island, that bench on the right is the concrete bench, that was the, the original bench that was recommended for the island because of its concrete, it's easy to maintain and very durable, after seeing the bench, the island raised some concerns, the BIIA got involved and proposed putting teakwood benches on the island because they're much more aesthetically pleasing, had a nautical theme to them, and it's more of what they wanted to see, so in 1996, PBR approved these teak benches, provided that the BIIA would agree to provide the maintenance of those. So as we move forward from that point on, 2004, we brought on the Jotoba benches, again, through the BIIA, and them agreeing to take care of the maintenance of those as well. In May of 2006, council approved policy B17, which basically did an umbrella coverage of all public benches, that the city would then take care of maintenance of all public benches, so that then brought these benches under our umbrella, and at that point on, we inherited the maintenance of those benches moving forward. 2012, so we maintained those benches in-house with in-house staff, at the time, we had our own working wood shop, we had carpenters on staff, and we were able to, to take care of the maintenance. In 2012, we eliminated that wood shop and downsized staff, and at that point, we had to proceed with contracting these services out, and then over the years, the cost continued to increase and becoming more and more expensive, but just in summary, here's a, a quick breakdown of the number of benches we're talking about, which type there are, where they're located, and again, some pictures there, this is a breakdown of the bid proposal we received, we went through a lot of effort to get proposals in, and we ultimately had to do a public works bid, and we only received one bid, and this is, this is the bid we received, and so we had some concerns with the cost, so that's why we brought that for you today. And then this is just a-
Sorry, just a moment, let's go back to the-
No, go ahead, I'm finished.
Okay, never mind, let's go to the next slide.
Okay, and this is just cost of, if we bought a new bench, this is the cost of purchasing and installing new ones, so as opposed to having them refinished, just replacing them all with new ones, this, these are the type of costs we would be looking at for that, and at times, we do have to replace them, sometimes they get damaged beyond repair, and we do have to buy a new one and replace it, and that's not included in the contract, the contract is strictly for refinishing. This is typical, you know, bench and trashcan costs throughout the city, those four benches there are, you may recognize those, those were previously approved on the B17 policy change, those are typical donation benches moving forward, so you could see those in comparison to what we have out there on the island, and then down below there, there's some examples of different trashcans as opposed to the Jotoba wood, so that gives you a brief point of reference on cost-wise for purchasing of benches. All these other benches in this photo here are much more maintenance friendly, they are much more durable, last a lot longer, require very little maintenance, so. So our recommendation tonight is to possibly have the council approve the contract, award the contract, and what we'd like to do is maybe one more refinishing, and then, you know, buy us some time to further evaluate if this is something we want to continue to do, if it's a sustainable model cost-wise, and if, if there's other options we should be looking at. So with that, ends my presentation, answering questions that you might have.
We have a few. Almost every councilmember, all right, Ms. Dixon.
Okay, let me begin, so let me just, on exhibit B and page 1824, just to see if I understand that chart correctly, I'm trying to understand the cost of re-finishing, repairing, maintaining a wooden bench, per year, is that, or every other year, how, what does it cost, and how often are we doing it?
On the, on the slide I have pulled up here, so.
Your mic on.
Oh, I'm so sorry, this is the cost per bench on this slide here that I have.
All right, $1,150, is that it?
Yes.
And how often?
This would be to do one refinishing per year.
Okay, so just to-
Just, that's for two.
All right, up to two.
Okay, but, all right, that's fine, let me just restate what the, the current policy was or initiated in that history you described, if my memory serves me correctly, when this $1,000 maintenance fee was added to the cost of the bench by the family or friends who were purchasing the bench, it was, the $1,000 was considered for the life of the bench, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's-
One, $1,000 payment.
Yeah, there was a $1,000 maintenance fee collected at the, the time of donation to cover maintenance of the bench for its useful life.
And that's when the city had its own internal shop to do that, so now we're talking about 100% more, plus, is $1,150 possibly annually or every 18 months to refinish that same bench, so this is the situation we are finding ourselves in, that it, multiply that times however many bunches, benches, 100 and-
109 benches.
Nine benches, of, and now, the matter before us tonight, just to be clear that I'm understanding this, is that you're looking for a budget authorization for 691, $691,000 to refinish and repair the 109 benches, is that correct?
Just a clarification on the, Councilmember Dixon, we received a bid in the $691,000 number you're referring to is for the total two-year bid, and that has not only just refinishing benches, it has maintenance in there, it has twice a year versus our recommended one-year cost in that, that's how the bid package was put together to fully cover that.
Okay, well then, let's say it's $345,000 for one year of refinishing 105, nine benches.
So in, in your staff report on page 184, you'll notice we put a table in there, and that table refers to about $148,000 is our estimated cost just to refinish every bench and every trashcan for one year, that would be what we would suggest, if you just did one more finishing, that would be our exposed cost, that doesn't include repairs, it wouldn't exercise every element of the bid.
Well then, why is the bid so expensive, I mean, I'm just dividing by two, why is-
Unfortunately, again, that also, there's an allowance in there for repairs, because a lot of the benches need certain elements, the slats have to be replaced, so staff has been historically doing that, so they added an element for the contract.
All right, so, help me out here, so if I personally were to say, I'd be comfortable with the $148,000 just for one year, to just do the final, the final refinishing of these just to give you time to get new benches ordered under the new system, is that what you're kind of looking at instead of half of the 691? Because you don't need to repair and rebuild the benches if we're shifting to a new model.
That'd be correct, if, if the decision is just to refinish them one more time, I don't know what the new model would be, but it would cost roughly $148,000.
All right, I just want to understand for my own purposes, okay, I'll let others ask some questions, thank you so much.
Mr. Avery.
Well, I'm reluctant to tread anywhere near Babo Island on these kinds of issues, just based on my recent experience up here, but I'll dive in just a little bit, not to get in the weeds, I think we just have to move to benches that don't need to be refinished, but we need to avoid, I believe, the, the ugly stuff, and there's some real ugly stuff, but there's some good benches, good materials out there today that look like wood, that pass, and I, I'm sure staff can come up with some great examples, and I just think we need to move that direction, and I, I just question whether we need to have that many benches, I don't know what, but that's, those are my only two thoughts, I would see, and I would not spend another nickel on refinishing anything, that's my defense. That's my two cents.
So just to be clear, these are the four benches that the Park, Beach and Rec have adopted as the benches in Newport Beach.
That's correct.
City, correct? Okay, Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. This slide is perfect.
Right.
Because it shows artificial wood, which looks fantastic. If we get some benches designed to look like similar to the teak we have now, let these ones slowly get weeded out or replace with ones that'll last a lot longer without fading, I think that's a better model. Because they're beautiful and if we had our own woodwork team, it makes sense, but this is not sustainable on a contract basis. So that would be my recommendation, is to let these ones phase out, find a replacement one for PBNR to sign off on, look similar, that the residents like, and put it in the back bench.
All right. Mr. Duffield.
I did, Councilmember Avery. Thank you.
Okay. I do too, but I'm going to start, I'm going to wade in a little bit farther. So number one, do we really need 109 benches on Babo Island? I mean, there's a lot of double-ups and blockage of walkways and things like that when you're on there. I mean, we have 109 now, but do we realistically need 109 when we do, if we were to do a replacement project?
I would suggest we don't need that many. I remember some of the conversations when I first got the municipal operation group, when there was a lot of need, people wanted to donate places, they were looking for places to put benches, and that's how I think you ended up with two at every street end. Carolbeak Park has three or four, I think, in it. I think, and Marine Avenue is a whole different animal. There are groups that think we need a lot of benches or other people think we should thin it out, and I'm not sure who makes that decision.
Yeah, so, I mean, you're looking at this and you think, okay, so even if we ended up at 100, you know, at 2,900 per bench, it's a whole lot less than, you know, even the contract that we're looking at right now. So it doesn't, from a cost perspective, it's not a close call. But I recognize that there are a lot of people who have plaques and they really care quite a bit about that particular bench. My suggestion would be that if we were going to start down the path of trying to find a way to replace and phase out, that we also have a plaque donation policy or a plaque of some kind where when the bench, yeah, we do have that, don't we? You know, actually, yeah, that's right. Yep, you're right. That's true. So we adopted, yeah, no, so we had that, we did, that's right. So anyway, we do need to make sure at least that families who would like to have the plaque back, that'd be great, especially as I'm looking at this. Can you go back a couple of slides, back to the cost slide? Yeah, I didn't even realize that we did new plaque purchase and installation. I mean, the old plaque should be given to the families anyway. But anyway, so that's, I would very much like to have the input of Babo Island Improvement Association and whatnot as we go through this process, but I'm kind of, I'm with Brad on this one. I don't, I mean, I don't think, I think it seems fairly clear up here, just from our incredulous questions, that the, that the cost of this has gotten so astronomical that the idea of maintaining these benches is unfeasible. And so we're probably going to need to get to the point where we're doing a replacement project and at that point, we'd like to, we need to talk about placement, we need to talk about thinning out, we need to talk about which design. So, Ms. Brenner.
I'd just like to clarify that we also are talking about replacing the old weathered trashcans as well. Although I would like to say that even their old weathered trashcans are better than the plastic tubs that we have on Ocean Boulevard, they're so atrocious. So, but we do need to look at something more sustainable in the trashcans.
Let me complain about Newport Coast for it. No, I'm just kidding. All right. All right, go ahead. I'm sorry, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Not that we have to vote on these, but I do like the artificial wood, the infinity bench. I don't necessarily care for the others, so I guess I would like, since Park, Beach and Recreation Commission is going to be taking this on next, is that what happens? Will they make the selection based on our action tonight?
That could be your direction, that they review this.
Anyway, I would like to, I'm sensitive to what Babo has a special affinity for these wood slat benches, and my suggestion would be to replicate that as closely as possible to what they currently have. And they're just as attractive and cost a lot less to maintain and they will last. What's the expectant life expectancy for the infinity bench?
We typically expect about 10 years out of those.
So that would, anyway, that would be my recommendation for, and that it's a good idea to get, certainly get Babo Island people involved in this, so everyone understands where we are. But I could just see the 691, that's almost $700,000, it's going to be a million dollars in a couple of years, and we're going to wish we dealt with this earlier. Okay, thank you.
All right, I mean, just for perspective, you can replace 51 benches with, 51 benches with the cost of that one year recommended on page 184. All right, Mr. Avery.
I think obviously it's a great idea and I can see how you'd come up with, it teaks beautiful wood and you'd have a nice bench and a nice plaque on it and all of it. It would work great if there was an adopt a bench program and somebody was really maintaining it, but we, of course, we know that to have that done on a consistent basis to serve the public property properly, that would be very difficult to do with 109 benches. But having been around wood boats all my life, I have refinished things similar to these wood benches and I know exactly how many hours of labor goes into it. Because there's the top, the bottom and the sides of all those slats, and to do it properly, you have to take them off. And it's just, it's crazy, but it's just, that's what it costs. And so it is totally unsustainable because of that. And it's, Duffy, the environmental side of it as well, so, yep. But, yeah, no doubt, a great idea. Certainly understand that the folks that wanted them, they're great, but like, the infinity bench is a pretty good alternative, something similar to that.
Okay. We'll go to public comment on this.
Mayor O'Neill, city council members, I'm Susan Riddle. I am very sorry, I didn't realize that the time was up to talk about Title 17, I thought they were still talking about the livabord. So I had a couple of questions to you on 1735.020F. Why are you eliminating the notice provision?
So, I'm sorry, Ms. Riddle, that item is done. And so if you'd like, we will be bringing it back in two weeks, but that item is passed.
Okay, so I can, in two weeks, I can talk about this?
We have to bring it back for a second reading anyway, so yes, you absolutely can bring it back for public comments and you can submit them to us directly as well for our consideration.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just, I was, I didn't realize. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Mayor, councilmembers, Dennis Bress, Babo Island. So, yeah, 700,000, when I read the daily pilot, it was like, shocker. Yeah, so I think you guys are spot on. It makes sense to move in the direction of having some community input from the island, BIAA, BIPA and the Babo Island Merchants Association. So as you know, we're really actively working together in a collaborative way. So, yeah, we can come up with a plan and a design based on plastic benches that meet the community's requirements. Also in regards to doubling up at the end of the streets, yeah, I think, you know, if each bench has a plaque on it, you know, it'd be up to the family if they want to keep it, or we could possibly even go to one bench and have two plaques on one bench. So there's a way to accommodate on that. I would also take a look at the bid process. I didn't know about it and only one single bidder. I know we're not heading in the direction of doing the refurb at all, but if we did want to have some benches, extend some life on it for whatever reason. Costa Mase has a pretty cool outfit called The Urban Workshop, and it's a wood shop, metal shop, and I think they might be open, they're local too, to possibly working with us. So I could give you their contact details and see if they might be interested if in a short term, we want to fix some benches to keep us going. But I think moving in the direction of having a community consensus on what bench is adequate and then moving in that direction would be awesome. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council, Mayor O'Neill and council. My name is Max Johnson and I live in District One on the Babo Peninsula. On this topic, even though it's for Babo Island, I wanted to ask Dave or staff if these considerations are also going to be made in District One. I know on the peninsula, Peninsula Point community specifically, we have plastic cans in a lot of our beach entrances, and I think that, I think these are the same cans that Joy was referencing to, that they're not very aesthetically pleasing. And I would make the recommendation that whatever cans or bench that we choose for the island, we could potentially also consider for peninsula. And then another comment in addition to that, I know I meant to message Diane about this, is staff or the city recently repaired some patches of lawn at the Wedge Park. And so, again, where a lot of benches in these, these plastic cans are, there's a section right along the Wedge jetty before you get out to the Wedge Tower that is completely destroyed. The concrete there is really hashed and it's right near patches of lawn that the city just replaced. I think it's a huge liability for the city, so that's something that I meant to, I took photos of that I can send Diane, but I think it's worth staff to look at to potentially-
All right, we're talking about Babo Island benches, so we're going to focus on that.
So in regard to this issue, if you can also consider our district and the cans, the recommendations making for Babo Island, if they can also be considered for the peninsula, and then what that would look like, what council would have to vote on or what Diane could propose. So, and I'm in favor of the artificial, so I do like the artificial option and I think that it's a lot more aesthetically pleasing than the plastic bins that we have lying around. So I know how many visitors we have down to my district and the beach, and I think if we're putting those same trashcans in Babo Island, I think it'd be worthwhile to put in Peninsula Point and the peninsula. Thank you.
All right. Next speaker, please. All right, seen none, we'll bring it back. Ms. Dixon.
I just want to say to echo Councilmember Brenner, I've been trying to get rid of, and Dave knows this, I've been trying to get rid of those blue trashcans for as long as I've been on the council, so maybe we can have a program for that. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Muldoon.
I'll make a motion, the staff withdraw this item at this time and come back with a new proposal per our input.
So, hang on just one second. Just to clarify, per our input would mean sending it to Park, Beach and Recreation for a recommendation on whether to, what to do with the current benches and if, and potentially replace, have a replacement program? Is that mine? Because that's how I've understood the consensus, but I just want to make sure that I understood your motion.
That's close enough, yeah.
Okay, all right. And that's how you understood it on the second?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, any discussion? All right, let's vote.
With Councilmember Hurdman voting, or recusing himself, the motion carries 6-0.
All right, Madam Clerk.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the councilmembers who voted with the prevailing side.
All right, and we will adjourn in memory of Stan Troutman. Ms. Brenner.
Yes, I'd like to adjourn the meeting tonight in memory of Stanley Madison Troutman. I don't think the irony will be lost on anyone of how we began the meeting tonight and ending the meeting in honor of Mr. Troutman, who was 102 years old. He was a world-renowned photographer. He started the photography department at UCLA. He was a World War II photographer. He had received a lifetime achievement award from the Press Photographers Association of Greater Los Angeles. He is, he was active in the community and in the church, which was the Newport Methodist Church in Coronet Almar. He is survived by three children, eight grandchildren, 19 great-grandchildren and one great-great-grandchild. He was deeply loved by the members of the community who would often sit at Inspiration Point with him in the evening and watch the sunset, so he will be deeply missed.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.